We're gonna have a chairman's update and then we invited the Board of School Committee in with us for a joint meeting to appoint a school committee member for one term. And then we're going into executive session to discuss the health insurance initiative and non-union negotiations, and we have a bunch of action items as well. So, Lorraine, you wanna lead us in the pledge?
I'm the United States of America, and to the public which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And Pauline's not feeling so well, so Dan's graciously stepped in to take the notes. So, having it after 6:45, anyone from citizens input? Going once, nobody, great.
Must be summer.
Mm-hmm. So, we'll jump ahead a little bit on the regional public safety dispatcher grant announcement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, earlier this year, about two months ago, I think it was, Chief O'Leary indicated that he had had conversations with town of Walpole. I think Sharon ended up joining us, and Norwood, and might've been one other as well. And the gist of his conversations was to explore the possibility to set up a regional dispatch center. Following those conversations, the chief convened a meeting, hosted it one morning up at the Public Safety Building. We had a discussion with some town managers in those communities, and it was a very productive discussion. I think the strength of the interest was Walpole and Foxborough with potential participation from the others. Based on the enthusiasm for looking at that, the chief wrote a grant to the E-911 program. Believe it or not, a little piece of every cellphone call made in the state goes into that fund, and it's used to pay for regional dispatch initiatives, and we actually get some training money and whatnot out of them. I'm very happy to announce to the public and to the board, congratulations to the chief. We got a $100,000 grant. This is about as major league a grant as you can get. It was based on the strength of the initiative and the chief's outstanding work putting the grant application together. And we'll be moving forward in the near future to hire a consultant and begin the feasibility study process. And hopefully, in the not distant future, you're gonna see Foxborough be the home for a regional dispatch capability, and so I'm very pleased to tell you that, and folks at home, and particularly to commend Chief O'Leary. He did an outstanding job. He had about, I think, about three days to put the application together. So, if you can imagine putting together an application for $100,000 in about three days, you can imagine the amount of work he did to get this pull together, and we scored that grant. So, we are now in possession of it, and this is the start of something very, very big for the town, I think. So, congrats to the chief, and I'm sure he's got some stuff he wants to add.
Thank you, Mr. Pecos. Certainly, it's an opportunity for us to make an objective assessment as to whether regionalization would fit in. Several years ago, Drew Gala had called together a meeting of several towns, and as a result of that, Norfolk, Brentham, and King Philip, in the King Philip District of Plainville, have formed their own regional dispatch center, have since incorporated Franklin into the mix, and are in the process of trying to receive funding to build up to their specifications. As Mr. Pecos indicated, Chief Stillman from Walpole had contacted me, and then we were joined with Chief Meany from Medfield, who had contacted him about regionalization. So, I'm hoping that after the RFP, a consultant can come in and make, again, an objective assessment as to the benefits for all three of our communities. But thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Any questions from the board, comments? Chief, on the cover letter, it has Walpole and Medfield, but on the letter from the state, it also includes Norwood. Is Norwood not part of this?
Originally, Norwood came to the meeting as indicated, but they were going through some revamping, and originally, it was for the three towns that I submitted for, and I just believe that's an error on E-911. I'm not discounting having Norwood join us. That is the case, and I haven't had a chance to talk with E-911 about the process for filing the RFP.
Great, okay. Well, thank you, and I guess on behalf of the board, too, it's great that we're still going in this direction of regionalization, and where we can get grant money to do it, it takes the edge off for sure and makes it possible. Thank you, appreciate it.
Expect, as chairman members of the board, we'll be putting that RFP. I've actually got one, I think, in my files, from the regional dispatch we did in Hingham when I was with them a few years ago, and I think I've got that in my file. We've also got the names of a few of the companies that are good at this, and the chief's got a couple more, so we're hoping by the end of the summer to get a consultant selected and get the feasibility study underway, get it done over the course of the next nine months, and then put in an application for a construction grant in the spring of next year, and actually start thinking about physically constructing it in 2000, later part of 2013, 2014, be up and running in '14 or '15, so it'll actually move along pretty quickly. And that's the way these folks like these things to go, so.
Excellent. Right on time at 6:55, we have two half-hour interviews started, with one, the first with Gellerman, and I apologize, is it Cabral or Sebrell? Cabral.
Hey, Dick.
Hi, Dick.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Great to be back.
So, I'll just say a few words, just to get everyone on the same page, and for the people at home can fully understand. On June 19th, we had the first round of interviews of six candidates, six firms, and at that time, we went down to two of the top firms, and we evaluated based on a half-an-hour interview. That first interview was pretty regimented. We all asked questions, we listened to the responses, and there was no interaction, no question and answer after that. I think what we wanted to do for this half-hour, now that you've applied, you've gotten whatever information from the first meeting, you've done your research, have this more of a roundtable discussion for a half-hour. We don't have prepared questions, but I kinda sent an email out to the board that said, if you have questions, ask them. Don't feel obligated. You can ask two questions, you can ask no questions, but it's your opportunity to engage us for a half-an-hour. And probably what I'm gonna ask is, if you can kinda give us a statement to open up of why your firm would be the best for Foxborough, and then engage us, and we can go from there for a half-an-hour, so.
Thanks, Jim. I think there are actually a couple of things that I did wanna talk about. One is the process that I would use, and we would use if we're selected as town council. And I'm talking about the process, not back at our firm, but how we would interact with the board and with your department heads. All decisions are made through a joint process, usually with the chairperson of a board, but sometimes boards designate one of their member to work with us, so that if we're negotiating a contract on your behalf, we'll work as we go along with whoever the town designates, and maybe Kevin, maybe Randy, and maybe a member of the board, so that we're in lockstep together. You know what we're doing, we understand what the board's desires are, what your interests are, so that when we come to the end of an agreement, by that I mean ready to execute it, the board knows and has known all along what that involves, not just legally, but what it involves financially in terms like that. I don't, I've never seen the town council position as a policy position. It isn't. Policy is made by you. We advise, we give legal advice, we give counsel, but at the end of the day, policy decisions are made by the board. When we did, for example, the stadium, I was in lockstep and never ahead of the board. It was always a member of the board who was participating with me, discussing with me where we were going, a lot of times actually participating in the negotiations. So, there ought not to be any concern that I'll get ahead of you in terms of any policy issues. I think with our firm, there's a little risk. You know who we are, you know how I operate, you know my history with Foxborough. One thing else I wanted to say is that I know you're looking for a contract with a firm, and that's fine, we're happy to execute a contract. I understand from the RFP, that'd be three years, but I want the board to know my outlook on that. We're happy to do a contract, I'm sure if selected, we can work it out. Our representation of you, however, relies on your faith and judgment in us, and if you no longer trust us or have faith in us, we will not hold anybody to a contract. That's not the nature of a client-attorney relationship. You just have to have faith and confidence. If that goes away for any reason, whether you're right or you're wrong, as long as it's not a bad reason, then we're fine. We just, so it doesn't really matter whether it's a one-year appointment or a three-year appointment. I made that pledge 30 years ago when I was first appointed. You need to have confidence. If you lose it, there's no reason for a lawyer to try to hang on. If we're selected, I mean, I know there's a lot of support here, and I greatly appreciate it. I know that it's not unanimous, and I appreciate that, too, and I want everybody on the board to know that it matters not to me in terms of how we would represent you. We have a client-attorney relationship with, if we're appointed with each of you, and everyone gets the same respect and honesty and trustworthiness from us if we're selected. The other reasons are sort of more pedestrian. We're nearby, we're local, we know the town, the town knows us, we're accessible, we're responsive, we're not so big that you can't reach us, we're not so small that we can't be responsive. We've done this kind of work for decades, and we think successfully, and I think the fact that we've been reappointed so many times in the communities we represent is proof of that.
Thank you. And I apologize at the beginning, just for the record, could you just say your names for the people at home as well?
Dick Gellerman.
And Mike Cabral.
Okay, thank you. So, any questions or discussion from the board members?
So, given everything that you've observed about Foxborough in our recent and not-too-recent history, what areas would you focus in on first with us?
Yeah, Lorraine, again, it isn't, I don't see the position that way, frankly. It's a job to respond to your policies. It's not up to town council to suggest policy changes or direction. It's more pedantic than that. I don't mean to say that when you give us issues, we won't provide counsel, because we will, but it isn't a policy-driven position. You know, it's obvious that you've gone through some difficult times. I was saddened to see the difficulties that you had. It strikes me frankly that you're in a calmer, better place than you were several months ago. It's good to see that.
Anyone else on the board?
In a conflicting situation where you got a board divided, sorry, in a conflicting situation, you got a board divided over an issue, and you got one side of the board telling you the direction they wanna go in, it's a split board per se. How would you try and reunite the board, get them together, without making the situation more divisive? What kinda, how would you handle a situation like that?
Yeah, and that happens, obviously. What I would do is quietly and behind the scenes, try to understand and learn where each of the sides is coming from, try to work with both sides to make them understand one another's issues. If an issue is resolvable by some straight law, whatever side is on the wrong side of it has to learn that, so if it's a decision that can be decided by a legal opinion, provide that. If there's a conflict on policy, I can give you my counsel. I urge you to try to find, and actually, I think I'm really good at that, in mediating, bringing people together. I honestly think that's one of my strengths over the years, and trying to find common ground and solutions to problems that turn the heat down and turn the intelligence up. So, you work with people, Mark, and you try to make them understand one another.
If you have a policy that this board was adopted last year, that all town council questions would go through the chairman, correct? And have a simple form of request for town council, would that keep you from basically, back a little bit, so all our requests to use town council goes through the chairman, and then it goes to the town manager, correct?
Yes.
If the town manager denied it, and you thought it was important to answer the question, how would you handle that situation? You know, 'cause...
How would he get it?
Well, no, 'cause we know, we know that he denied our request, and we'd probably say, okay, well, we really want Dick to answer this question. How would you handle that?
If I can help you, Mark. Actually, what your policy says is that if a member of the board has a request for town council, that comes here to the board.
Correct.
It doesn't go from a board member direct to council, the concern being budgetary control.
Right.
If the board votes or consenses that it wants an opinion, that overrides any authority I have, obviously. And so, that question would go either from, direct from Jim or from me, to town council. The requests from the departments come to the town manager, and those get approved or disapproved, but those are from the departments and not this board. If this board wants access to town council, the manager has no authority to shortstop that. That would never happen. Plus, it's a really bad career move, you know, if I did that.
Right, well, the thing, what I was trying to get on the follow-up would be, the reason we adopted that is so that people don't ask the same repetitive questions, not knowing that another board member's already asked a question. So, my point, would you respond to just that one board member or the whole entire board as a CC?
Yeah, if it's a phone call, Mark, you know, and I would tell whoever the caller was, you know, gee, that question's already come in, and I've talked to someone else about it. Occasionally, the rule notwithstanding, I'm sure Kevin's seen this, is that department heads sometimes do call directly, and I understand the budgetary rule, and it's a good one, and without it, it's hard to operate, but we do get calls from, or emails from department heads, or emails from members of the board I'm talking about now, and Sharon, for example. My response to that is, I get the question, I then call the town manager or the town administrator, and I let the client know that I have to go to the town manager to get approval for the use of my time. If it's a very simple thing, I'll just answer it, but when one member of a board calls, absent authority of the board itself, if that's what's happening, I will tell that member, you need to get, if it's not your board, you need to get Kevin's authority, and you need to get your board's authority to inquire and use our time.
Thank you.
So, you've been paying attention, I know you've been out of town for a bit, but you've been paying attention to what's going on, so, and you probably know more history than anyone in this room about Foxborough and everything, so as far as catching up, you know, to get caught up on what's going on in this town, that wouldn't be an issue for you at all, basically. I mean, we wouldn't, I know that other firms that have probably done some look-up about us and things like that, they don't have the knowledge that you already have, so I don't know if that's what you'd call it, the catch-up time or whatever you'd call it, but that's not gonna be a big factor for you, correct?
No, it, well, I have been following that, and actually, a lot of the issues you've been involved in, other than the casino, which I heard about.
Yeah, well, you heard about that, did you, really?
I heard about the casino, but a lot of it is work, actually, that we did, billboard work, I'm familiar with, the stadium place. But I would meet, not on your dime, with Paul, as we did before.
Yep.
And, you know, go through with him anything that may be pending. The transition last time was fine, he's a fine guy, there'd be no reason why I wouldn't. But our ramp-up time would certainly be a lot shorter than anybody else's.
Ramp-up time, that's good, instead of the catch-up.
Off the clock, Kevin, off the clock.
Looking forward, looking forward.
Dick, you also represent the town of Sharon?
Yes.
And if there's ever a conflict between, or an issue, between the town of Foxborough and the town of Sharon, would you approach that the same way you would approach the, if there's a conflict between a committee or something like that, try to work with both, or do you separate?
I would try to work if possible, but that's a really slippery slope for a lawyer. For the most part, if there's a conflict between the two communities, I would not represent either.
Oh, okay.
You just, you can't do that, so you pull out there. Actually, when I first started, there was some conflict over Cannon Forge, but if a real conflict exists, you just, even internally, if, heaven forbid this happens, 'cause I really dislike it, but if there were a conflict between two boards in town, it's just best not to represent either, so we'd get your counsel, we'd recommend counsel for each. Doesn't happen very often, though, Jenny.
Any questions?
Well, Paul, Paul's run this handles Mansfield, and if you're a Foxborough girl, you know that we'd probably have more problems with the Mansfield people than we would the Sharon people, but that just goes way back.
Sharon's not, I mean, Mansfield's not a conflict.
Right.
Almost was, many years ago.
Else said, Jenny?
Yeah, oh, yes, sorry. Thank you.
And I know you have a long history in Foxborough, and I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I wasn't involved in any of the...
It's a good thing, Jim, I'll...
...of the years back, but, you know, I've heard your name bantered about, you know, throughout the years on different items and developments that went on. What I did do was go back a few years ago, I think it was to the Board of Selectment, did a kind of a reach-out and a report on Dick Gellerman and your services, and I think that's at the time where they were thinking of changing council or doing an evaluation.
I think it was a year or two before that, Jim.
Before that, okay.
They did that evaluation, it was a couple of years before, 'cause it was pretty positive and...
Yeah, it was 2005, and that's, that was one of my questions was, okay, board members, what has changed in a year and a half since we've done this, that now all of a sudden we're shopping for a new council? I just, you remember that, right?
Yeah. You're right, it was 2005.
Five, yep.
That's when we did an evaluation, was 2005.
Right.
And that was, Paul, he did it, he let it up, and...
And Jim Thrasher was on it. I remember they reached out to Andy and Randy and all the different department heads, and it was very positive.
Yep.
And if it was a negative that I could pull out of that, it was, you were somewhat passive in negotiations, some people thought you could've been more forceful, but I think that's the only thing that stuck out at me at the time. But throughout that report, it was Dick Gellerman, Dick Gellerman, Dick Gellerman, and now we've got Mike sitting here, and it's a few years later. What if Dick Gellerman is not here at a meeting? Maybe Mike can spend a few minutes, your name's on the door. How do you fit into this whole situation?
I'm happy to. Again, we have four attorneys in our firm, both Dick and I, Lisa Whalen, and Cindy Amara as well. Everyone in our firm is versed in municipal law. Everyone comes from a municipal law background as well. If Dick is unable to be at a meeting, one of us, I'll be at a meeting, or one of our associates will be at a meeting. If Dick is unable to be there for some reason, I'm more than happy to be there. Again, all of us are versed in municipal law, have been representing municipalities or have been involved in municipal law for quite some time.
Okay. The term I keep hearing for years is, we're a small town with big-city issues, you know, when you bring the craft organization and the patriots in, so probably, you know, most of the time, it's pretty run-of-the-mill for municipal stuff, but when issues come up or opportunities, we have to work with a big organization on a quick timeline. Do you have the support, do you have the support to push things through and address it?
I mean, I actually have more support than I've ever had. If a particular night comes up that I'm busy or with something else, the way we work, certainly, say, a major issue came up regarding Dick the stadium, because why not? Generally, tend not to work on that myself. There'll be another attorney in my firm involved with it and know about it, whether it's Mike or Lisa or Cindy, so whenever you're working on those, you're never working against one lawyer, there is a team, and so we generally work on those matters, at least in tandem, sometimes even more than that. And a lot of times, we get other people to pay for it, Kevin, because it's their project, so that's a... But we keep one another abreast, we meet regularly. Some of the department heads, for example, in town, all Lisa, they've worked with her, they like her a great deal. She always reports to me, I always know what's going on, we always consult. She tells me the issues, we discuss them. She gets the benefit of what I think, we do the work, and so it isn't me, just me, although historic basis is me, there is some also with others in the firm.
And if I could just say, I think it's important to note as well that as a firm, we meet, we keep in touch, we know the issues going on within the town, so that if Dick is not there, or I am not there, or both of us for some reason are not there, everyone in our firm knows what's happening with our clients. So, we have checks in place to make sure that everyone knows the issues going on.
Thank you.
Mark?
Especially, I guess, as directed to more of you, Dick, you've been involved with the town of Foxborough, a lot of stadium contracts, and like you said in your first interview, you know the players, and in the last year, we all knew all the players, too, in a very divisive situation in town where it became that you had to separate friendship from what was best for the town of Foxborough, and it is a difficult thing to do sometimes because you're on different sides of an issue, trying to keep it from being more emotional than anything, and trying to be, you know, factual in your findings and all. So, now you're gonna be going possibly into the same situation where you know the players and you're friendly with the players in a way, or always were before. How hard is that to separate yourself from being a representative of the town of Foxborough's council and knowing the players and saying, well, you know, guys, can we get along this time and kinda see it my way? How do you do that? How do you separate, see, 'cause it was very difficult for me, I'll say that, to separate myself from being a board member to a person who's lived in the town, and they were friends... were friends on the other side of the fence. How do you separate it?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, Mark. Most, almost without exception, when, if we're talking about the stadium, my interaction is with their council. The fellow who was represented in many of the years is someone who I actually am very friendly with and think the world of. But it's interesting with lawyers, we can be the good friends, but I know that he never stops representing his client. He knows that I never do. I mean, it, and, and so we, we just, over the years, you learn the ability to separate out your personal affection for who you're dealing with from the interests of your client. But I will say that the respect that I have for them and they have for me is to the town's benefit, it's never to the town's detriment. It makes it possible to resolve problems, to, to trust one another and to work them out. But it, if, if there's a disagreement, and, you know, there can be and there has been, there's never a failure to support the client's interest. And you do it. I mean, toward the end, we litigated against the stadium on behalf of the plumbing department. Everybody understood that's what you had to do. So it's, it, it's hard for laymen, I don't mean it, to understand that, meaning you see lawyers fighting like crazy in court, and they're walking out with their arms around each other. This is the way it is for us. It's, it's not, it's not personal, it's, it's how we operate. So they don't have that problem. And I don't think it is a problem, I think it's, it's to the benefit of client. And, you know, if I can get back, Jim, passiveness in negotiation, which actually I would like to talk about, because-
And Dick, I wasn't saying that it was a negative, but that's what I-
No. It's, it's a misconception.
It's a misconception.
I, I am a gentle person, there's no question about it, and I'm, you know, conciliatory and try to work matters out. And I, you know, you'll never see me banging the table, okay? But, but I think that's in the client's interest. And I, you know, if you can avoid litigating, you should. It's time-consuming, it's expensive, it's unpredictable, and you don't know where it's going to come out. If you can resolve a problem, you should. There are times when you simply can't, you just can't. And then, and then you litigate, and, and, you know, we, and the few times that I have had to litigate, we've had great success. But, you know, people just, I don't mean you, but, but, that's just sometimes the stick to my crap, people take for passivity just a gentleness, and that's who I am. But, you know, you say what you're going to do, and you do what you're going to say, and everybody's fine.
Do you find that detrimental, that people do think that you would try and avoid litigation at all ti, at most times? Or do they, do they feed on that from you? Do they know that you're serious, that you will go there? How do you, how's that work out?
Well, you just tell them, Mark. I mean, you know, you present your position, you try to work it out. If you don't, you just tell them, you litigate it. You know, if people test it, then they find out.
And do you think if you were, you know, obviously we'll always use the stadium as a, as a example, because it's the biggest entity in town, if you were negotiating, going to the stadium to negotiate, or hear about something that they called you to the table and say, you know, Dick, this is what we want to talk about, would you inform the Board of Selectmen and invite a member to go with you possibly? Would you just go off on your own?
No, I absolutely, I would never go off on my own.
Okay.
Absolutely not. If you get communication from the stadium, and that would come to me through council, whatever, they want to build another addition to the, to the stadium. Yeah, absolutely, bring the board in immediately, bring the board into the negotiations. I would never get in front of a client.
And the town manager, obviously?
Sure.
Yeah. So is everybody would be CC'd on the same page?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's just-
Thank you.
So can you share with me how you do it without slamming your hand on the table and stuff, because I could use some of that? Yeah, exactly.
You can train in classes.
It does make you feel better.
Well, you know.
Anger management.
I like to think it's, you know, intelligence and experience, and if you understand your position, and you can explain it, and you're dealing with somebody on, on the other side who's got some intelligence, they'll see it.
But if you're not, it's okay to slam your hand on the table, right? Because I do it a lot, Dick.
I think most of that's bluster, I, I just do, I think it's bluster, and I don't, I don't see this, that it serves anything.
No, you never did. And you, you've always done really well in the face of individuals that, you know, are, you know, just battering at you and battering at you. I've, I've witnessed it a couple of times, not with this board, past boards. And I was just amazed how you just kept your cool and, and stayed to the point, and I thought, I want to learn how to do that, I really do.
Thank you. I'll try to explain, explain it. But thanks, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
All right, there's probably three minutes left. Let me ask one final question. Everyone came in with fee proposals?
Yeah.
And we're going to have to put a spreadsheet together, because some of them are confusing. What's the thought process that you went through to come up with your fee proposal? Whether it's hourly or most common things?
Yeah. I, I know the discussion is between an hourly rate and a fixed rate. And I know some people think that a fixed rate is, is bad, I don't think so. I think an hourly rate is, is beneficial to town. You never know on a fixed basis what's going to happen. The hourly rate is, that I proposed, is, is pretty reasonable. You know, I guess the fear is, will, will we spend more hours on a matter than is necessary? The simple answer to that is, we can make more money doing hourly rates for everybody else we represent. So we're disinclined to do that. It's, it's also dishonest, and you're sophisticated enough, Kevin, to see it. You pick it up in a heartbeat, so we don't do it. So I think, I've always thought an hourly rate was fairer to everyone. I mean, I, I can be persuaded otherwise, if that's really where you want to go, I'm willing to, to try that. Even at an hourly rate, the budget pretty much has always come in where you anticipate it would. The extraordinary things are litigation that you don't anticipate, deal negotiation of major matters that you don't foresee. But, but for litigation, before you get into it, you'll get an estimate of our, of what we think it's going to take to get you there, you'll decide. In project negotiation, you'll get a, we'll have a very good sense of how long that may take. A lot of times, just, let me say, and I don't know what your experience has kind of been in development issues, we've almost always been able to impose as a condition of a development agreement that the applicant reimburse the town for council fees. There's a statute that sort of says you can do that, but nobody ever resues it. And so that takes the burden off of you and lets us, lets us proceed. So the short answer is, I think hourly is fairer. That's what I've always done with all clients, not just municipal clients. If you're really heart set on some other way, we're happy to talk about that, too.
Okay, thank you. Anything last from the board?
Well, thank you all very much, appreciate it. The next people, they're not going to show up, so you-
Ah.
Great, thank you both, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Best of luck.
Good to see you. You remember that?
Me too.
I'll give you a ring.
Can I? I'll go get you a ring. Nice guest. Right to the minute. You going to bring a trophy in?
I think everybody at home's wondering what we're doing right now. Here they come.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Mead.
Yes.
Hi Lisa. Mark Sullivan.
Nice to meet you.
Jim DeVales.
Hi Jim, how are you? Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Sorry.
Irene, I'm sorry.
Linda Walsh.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Jenny Capola. Very nice to meet you, Jenny.
So Lisa's one of the four of us, I thought, maybe mix it up a little today, introduce you to another one of the partners, as I mentioned last time, we kind of, all four of the main municipal partners have a hand in in what we do.
Okay, great.
So I thought I'd, I'd bring Lisa.
Yeah, yeah. I'll just say a few things just to get us all on the same page.
Sure.
If you recall, you were in here on June 19th for the initial interview, and there were six candidates, six firms, and we've brought that down to two, so the second of this evening. And we allocated a half an hour.
Okay.
And the last interview was a little more scripted and structured than it's going to be tonight. Each board member asked a specific question, and we just listened.
Okay.
There wasn't a lot of dialogue. What we decided this time was giving you the opportunity over the 30 minutes to run it the way that you would like to run it.
Okay.
You've had an opportunity to probably find out a little bit about Foxborough, you learned a little bit from the first interview. What I would suggest is if you could just kind of give an opening of why your firm would be best suited for Foxborough.
Sure.
And we don't have prepared questions.
Okay.
And ask the board if they felt a question is appropriate, ask it. You may ask a couple, you may ask none.
Right.
And we'll just run it for 30 minutes, if that's okay. The other thing I do ask, we are being televised for the people at home, if you could just introduce your name for the record, and we'll go from there. And I'll let you know about five minutes before the half hour.
Okay, so go ahead.
Sure. My name is Lisa Mead, Blatman Babrowski Mead, and my office is located in Newburyport. As you know, we have several offices, my, mine happens to be in Newburyport.
And my name's Jay Tallerman, I was here last time, Lisa's new this time. My office is in nearby Millis, I'm a resident of Norfolk, and I've been with the firm since '06, about two years after it was formed in earnest. Although, our other partner who couldn't be here tonight, Mark Babrowski, has been doing land use law around the Commonwealth for 20, 30 years at this point.
Right, late 80s.
And he actually had an, an office right, right around the square many years ago.
Okay.
So, so in terms of why we think we're a good fit, I'll just kind of summarize a little bit about what we do and how we do it that's a little bit different, and then in a specifically a little bit, and Lisa's going to chime in as well. As I mentioned last time, we provide some unique financial methods of, of managing legal services that ultimately results in this kind of team proactive approach, where you have, even though Rich may be the designated primary contact with the kind of co-primary with myself, you have, you can avail yourself of Lisa and Mark as well as needed, because we're very partner-centric, not very associate-centric. And our flat fee arrangements, should you choose to avail yourself of those, allow kind of almost unlimited contact, unlimited litigation, office hours, and all of those other things that we talked about at length last time. In the, some examples of how we work, so today I had, we've talked about office hours a little bit. Today I had office hours in Easton, where we're town council, and where I'm the primary contact person. So I spent all morning there, meeting with DPW, meeting with the planning director, met a little bit with the town clerk and the treasure collector, and of course, the town administrator, on the issues du jour. We, we went through a bunch of stuff, we got a lot accomplished right then and there. There's a bunch of other things that are not particularly within my specialty, but are in Lisa's specialty, a lot of contracting issues. I take those in, I give them to Lisa, they communicate directly with Lisa. It's that kind of team approach that really makes us work well, always from the partner level on down. As to Foxborough in particular, a lot of towns we manage are very similar in size and shape to Foxborough, so we're used to the same general size. Kingston, not altogether different, Bellingham, Easton, even Marblehead, relatively similar, with some differences in focus of the specific towns. But in terms of handling a suburban town of your size, with your needs, with your concerns, with your potential growth issues, we, we have a lot of experience in exactly that kind of field. Additionally, there's two other things I'd mention on that, is, the first is that in terms of big project experience, and I know you're constantly have an evolving relationship with, with Kraft and with Patriots Place and all of that, Mark Babrowski has done a tremendous amount of work. He'd done development agreements in addition to the projects we mentioned last time. Lisa can speak to a couple of other projects that, that he's worked on. He's worked, I think, directly with the Kraft family, and he's also worked in nearby Sharon on some important development agreements as well. And second to that is, I live in, next door in Norfolk. I read about you guys, I know about you guys. My town has a lot of similar problems. My daughter races against Foxborough on the track team, so we have a, a feel for what it's like to live in this area, what the pressures are, where the growth trends are, what your planning board may be faced with, what your conservation commission may be faced with, what growth from the city on out in terms of transportation and otherwise, what you may be going through. So we, we think that we can offer both the general feel for what your needs may be, as well as some specific focus on exactly what you may be going through as the town continues to grow.
Let me just add a little bit, since I didn't have an opportunity to be here last time, kind of where the genesis of the way we operate in our firm and offer services arises, and that is, when Mark and I first got together, I, before, if you've read my resume, before I started doing this, I was actually mayor of the city of Newburyport. And I found, through working with my then-city solicitor, that if I had the opportunity to have somebody come in and do office hours and offer me essentially a flat fee on a month, my department heads in particular, and myself included, were more likely to be preventative, and didn't hesitate to pick up the phone and call council prior to taking an action or making a decision. And instead of worrying, well, if I call, it's going to cost me more money, instead of making the right decision, moving down the road, which may save me more money in the end, it took away that inhibition. And so when I got together with Mark, we said, well, let's, let's offer services to a community in a different way than everybody's used to giving legal services. And so we came up with this, when Jay joined us, we came up with this flat fee idea. And I would venture to say that in all the communities that we represent, litigation in particular has dropped dramatically. That with Mark's style of working out development agreements rather than trying to litigate them in the appropriate instances has been helpful. To Jay's point, Mark worked out recently an agreement with a box company that Mr. Kraft owns in Boylston, so he's had experience. He also, in the, in the recent past, was hired as special counsel in the town of Sharon to do a major development agreement with the town of Sharon underneath the current town council. And so he certainly has a lot of experience working out development agreements. Jay has a lot of zoning experience. I come for more the general municipal side of things, and we like to say that we know what it's like to sit on your side of the table, to understand the pressures that you're under, to understand that there's a time to draw the line in the sand, and, you know, make sure you advocate on behalf of your community, and at other times, make sure you make the right decision, so you're not ending up advocating for the wrong reasons. And so those are the kinds of services that are the, you know, the baseline of our firm. And we like to make sure we bring those and deliver those to the communities that we, that we serve. And we think that that would be very beneficial to the town of Foxborough.
Thank you, well said. Anyone from the board with questions?
I'm going to ask my same basic question I asked last time.
Sure.
Maybe general to you, but, so given what you have learned about Foxborough over the, our experiences over the past few months, are there any areas that you as new council to the town would find potentially ones that you would work towards first, or any general sense?
Well, with respect in particular, some of the issues that have dominated the news cycle involving potential casinos and further expansion of, of the whole Patriots Place area, I think there's a lot of things. It's been, as I, as best I can tell, from reading about the history and from just experiencing the history from nearby, next door, it appears that things have been somewhat linear in nature, growth over time on things, and then there's big steps forward. When they, when he did Patriots Place, it was a massive addition to it. I mean, and several years down the road, obviously, from the new stadium, but the new stadium was a big issue before that. And then you get an issue like the casino dumped on your lap. There's not much in the way of being proactive and- There's not much in the way of being proactive in terms of, that can prepare yourself for something that is only going to happen three times in the Commonwealth. But there's a way of looking holistically, and this is somewhat what Mark does and somewhat what I do, about taking stock in what you have, and trying to predict in the future the way you want to manage it, and working closely with your planning staff, and with your town manager, and with you all, and trying to find out what you want for it. And where we can zone for it, great, and where we can develop other bylaws of either general or zoning, or whatever, to help accommodate some of the potential growths and growth pains that you may have with that, we'll work with you closely on that. And we have a million models, that's Mark's expertise, he's rezoned 30, 40, 50 towns at least. And then, we want to be your partner in these things. As things come up, we want to be there at your flank, and at the town manager's flank as need be, to help walk through these things in a way that we can be proactive to it. That being said, we also want to work to ensure your principles, and say where we think you can draw the line, if you want to draw the line somewhere, and do that in a methodical way to help you. Because as you know, our product, our flat fee, allows you to draw the line and hold true to your principles. So those are the kinds of approaches I would apply to something like that. We know it's incredibly difficult, there's no perfect solutions to anything like that, and there's no one unified opinion, that much is clear. It divided the town fairly squarely, and it was very controversial, but we work with you as our leads to try and get to wherever we have to be. And if it comes to pass, we try and get the best agreement for what you can do. I don't think there's anything more or less I can add to it than that. We will work to develop those things.
I think to Jay's point about being able to be proactive, and having experience in other communities, and being able to turn on a dime, for example, given Mark's experience, and actually one of our associates, Adam Costa, with Chapter 40R, which is a planning and development tool, as you know, there's a, in Dartmouth, before 40R was adopted, there was a very large 40B project that was going on in Dartmouth. And the town didn't want it, and really, the developer could see that it was going to start to be problems for him as well. And the town said, you know, we've got to do something else. And 40R came out, and we were able to bring the developer and the town together, and switch that entire 40B project over into a 40R project. Now, then the economy fell out, and it wasn't completed, but the reality was, everybody was happy with the 40R project. Nobody was happy with the 40B project. And it was because of our experience and our ability to kind of forecast what was happening down the road, to be able to change the process. And I think that if you're in a room, and you have somebody that has that kind of expertise at their fingertips, as our firm does, it's more beneficial to you in your negotiating position to try to get something better in the end, that would, you know, serve everybody.
You know, the other element to that too is, things don't always work out so well, where you have two parties begin and end just on a rosy relationship that results in an agreement, without anyone throwing haymakers, or somehow getting into it and exercising their leverage to the extent that they have it, whether or not it's a complicated but pro-developer casino statute, or whether it's 40B, or some other tool. We have been long believers, although Mark and I and Lisa try and break bread as much as possible, there are times when you can't. And we are firm believers, and I've always tried to exercise this, is that where we have to exercise our leverage, I firmly believe that municipalities have more leverage than I think that most council would think they do. I think that even in 40B context, which can be enormously difficult for towns, and where we routinely have a poor record of success at certain levels of review, we've managed to build fantastic settlements, and fantastic agreements for development, to take the projects that really don't smell very good coming in the door. And maybe we never make them smell like a rose, but we make them smell a lot less like a skunk, or we serve notice that you're going to have to work really hard to get our approval here. And again, that's part of what we see as towns having to do sometimes, that led us to this method whereby we can allow you to stand on your principle and do what you feel you have to at a certain time, and we've been pretty successful exercising municipal leverage in that regard.
Thank you.
Jay, sure.
In your first interview, and in tonight's interview, you stressed your flat fee extensively. Reading back in the proposals, you had two types of, you had two flat fees proposals, and then you had an hourly fee. And in all three of them, there was a paragraph that said, however, anything dealing with the Kraft organization and the properties in that area would be a separate contract. That says it doesn't fall under the flat fee. And when you consider that, what we've just been through, and what we will be going through, we're going to be dealing with the Kraft organization, well, for the rest of our lives. And why would that be a separate contract, and what would the separate contract be?
Well, I think there's a couple of things there. A, I think we're willing to be flexible. When that proposal came in, which was the first go-round with the interviews, we were already speaking to the town about potential special counsel services to provide to the town. So when we sent back the proposal the second time, we sent back the original proposal. I'm more than happy, given the fact that things, at that point, what the issue was, was casino, no casino, how are we going to, how is the town going to work with that? We saw the amount of hours potentially that were teed up at that point. I'm more than happy to consider and to fold in things involving Patriots Place and negotiations with them, including potential future casino things at this point, because we don't have that whole curve, that whole learning curve. I think it's a great point that you raised. So in terms of dealing with Patriots Place in general and growth over there, we're more than happy to fold that in. At that time, we were still looking at a potentially a separate contract with the town, because we were already speaking with your staff potentially about providing services, never got to that. But because Rich Bowen already does special counsel work for the town, we had some preliminary discussions. But, so, thanks for raising that. I think that's a terrific point, and I'm more than happy to adjust the proposal, or come up with hybrids of the proposal as you see fit.
Thank you.
Mark, Alinda, Melarine.
Just, and I'm going to forget the word that I just learned, but, how much time do you think it would take you to get up to speed on current issues that are facing us, that council is working on now, and things like that?
Sure. Your typical turnover, I mean, we, it depends on what you charge, but we wouldn't, to come up to speed generally, to receive the files, to understand what was hot, that would be included in your flat fee. If you chose the hourly fee, that would be discounted, like you would any other transition for legal services. So, I don't, you know, I don't see it as a major issue, it certainly wouldn't be a costly issue to the town, because you're going to have that with any, if any new council to come up to speed, so.
Yeah. I don't think, I'm not concerned about the fees, I think that would, you know, wash out somehow, but just.
Time generally?
Yeah.
I don't, you know, Jay, since he's going to be more active, would have to answer, but I don't, I mean, there's nothing out of the ordinary that's happening, to my knowledge. So, I don't think that it would be, you know, other than, you know, meetings, meeting with the department heads to understand, meeting with you to understand what your priorities are, meeting with Kevin to understand what the hot items are, you know, looking at whatever litigation you have, to understand where you are. You know, I don't see anybody losing any time on that, either time or money.
Since we, our first town as town council, where we've done 12 towns, in terms of transition from other council, and other council, any other council has been through that, it's a relatively small fraternity, as you know, among lawyers that do town council services. We've transitioned 12 towns to our firm, and there are, you know, varying shapes and sizes of the disputes. The land use cases, whatever you have on the land use docket, because all of us have litigated essentially every single kind of land use issue known to man, that transition goes incredibly smoothly. We work with council to transition that, we can get up to speed very quickly, we know most opposing council, I'm not exactly sure what the entire docket is, but I have a general feel, I don't think that would be long at all. Some of the general stuff, very simple, we take some meetings, we'll probably have a few meetings in town hall to work through some of those issues. In terms of probably the big set of boxes involving Patriots Place and Kraft, probably take a little bit more time to get through understandably, but given where things are, and where there's been a little bit of break in the action, although I'm sure the action is always ongoing, I think that we could probably get up to speed pretty quickly. That would be the tallest order, no doubt. I'm sure it's the biggest set of boxes that you have out there. The rest of the stuff we've done before, I'm not diminishing any of the uniqueness of it, but my guess is, within a couple of weeks, we could have a good feel on all your litigation, have all of our appearances in, start scheduling meetings with any of the boards, executive sessions, as you guys may see fit, to go through options if we see a different path forward perhaps. But it would go pretty quick, and we obviously would work pretty closely with Kevin, as well as your board, to transition any of the general matters.
One of the things that we like to do in the firm also, is we kind of have a set of contracts that are our contracts, that we like to have the communities use, and the reason is this, one, I've developed them over a number of years, that we think protect the community better than most of the contracts you see on the street. And two, if you go out for an RFP, you attach your contract, and when you have a response, or you have an offer in from an engineer, whoever, you're negotiating your contract or saying, this is the deal, because it was part of the RFP. As opposed to having to review and negotiate every engineer's contract that comes in, every, you know, every other contractor that's providing services to town, negotiating a different contract. You know that you always get protected, and we know what those terms are. So we would work to transition into, as contracts come up, obviously you're not going to replace the ones that are in existence, but as contracts come up and RFPs come up, transition into those contracts that are unique to this town, and that make sure they cover you, as opposed to having to renegotiate every single time, a contract that comes in from somebody else that quite frankly, is protecting them and not protecting the town.
You said, in your first interview, you used to work at Copelman and Page?
Yeah, I was a partner at Copelman and Page.
What made you decide to venture off to this firm, and, I mean, you don't have to answer the question.
No, I'm happy answering it.
It struck me, it was intriguing, it was intriguing to me that you belong to one of the largest firms.
Right.
In the state.
Yeah.
That will represent, I believe, 50 municipalities?
Oh, 130.
130.
As town council, and probably another 60 or 70 as special counsel, yeah.
And then you ventured off with Mark?
With Mark and Lisa.
Right.
Lisa was already there, yeah.
Okay. And then you started your own, the three of us.
Well, actually, Mark and myself, and actually Mark's wife, Betty Ann Blatman, who's also an attorney, we started the firm first. And then in two years, Jay joined us. So that's kind of the evolution.
And I guess, it probably wouldn't surprise you that I've had that question before, and I think it's a good question, because while I have a lot of good friends at the firm still, and while I think that there's some excellent, excellent attorneys there, there were two principal reasons why I left. And the first was, I had no life. When you spread yourself out over 100-something towns, and I became the firm's manager of all affordable housing projects, so all 40Bs, which gets pretty busy, as well as one of the top people on zoning, as well as the number two person on wetlands, and I was also trying to manage four towns at a time, I didn't have any time for myself at all, and I have two kids, two teenagers, so that was part of it there. But the side part of that is, I didn't have any time for the clients either. There was no way I could give the attention to the clients that I wanted to. And that frankly, Copelman wanted me to as well, but when you're in that kind of demand, it becomes virtually impossible to do that when you're spread so far. One of the things that we try and do is keep our client list in reasonable check, so that we have built-in time, the flat fee is part of that. But when we feel ourselves getting stretched, we'll add personnel. So we added Rich Bowen a couple of years ago, not because we couldn't handle what we had in front of us, but we couldn't handle it and be as proactive as we wanted to. So I was doing, I felt, my clients a disservice, because I had four nights a week, 50, 60 cases juggling at a time, and it gets very difficult for the partners there. And then pressing the work down to the associates becomes even more difficult, because A, the town is dealing with someone less experienced, and B, I'm trying to manage that as well. It became very impossible. The second thing that I wanted to do, and that I was working with, and a firm that size to its credit cannot deal with it with their overhead, they can't offer the proactive approach that we offer. I like to get involved and help you with policy decisions. I'm not the kind of lawyer, Lisa's not the kind of lawyer, Mark's not the kind of lawyer, Rich and Betty Ann are not the kind of lawyers that want to just be the lawyer, and say, just ask me the legal question, I'll give you the legal answer. We're the kinds that want to help you achieve your goals. Couldn't do that, they're managing so many things, and couldn't do it with that financial structure, because the amount of hours I would have billed would have put you over budget by August. Just doesn't work. I had long explored the notion of kind of flat fees, or set fees, or fees by job or type of project. It just doesn't work at a firm that has a large Boston address, a ton of staff, and all those associate mouths to feed. So when Lisa and I really started brainstorming on this with Mark, we said, there's a better way. And we started putting out our proposals, and we started refining the proposals.
And you stayed married then?
Yes.
We still talk.
And you know what?
If he said no, then what are you doing?
I could anticipate, you know, by his passion, that it meant a lot to you.
It did. And I don't miss, I don't miss my daughter's track meet, I don't miss my other daughter's soccer games, I walk the dog every morning, I play an occasional round of golf, and I still get my, well, maybe a little more than occasional, but I still get my work done, I still do my office hours, I fully serve my clients, and we're able to offer this whole new approach, that's a little bit different. And again, I'm not taking anything away from a very good law firm for the right kind of town, that wants great lawyers in a reactive format, they're awesome, they do a great job. And they have some attorneys who I feel very comfortable with, do great work, but they're just different than us.
It says a lot about you.
There's probably about three minutes left.
It says a lot about yourself and your character by making that statement.
It was, they're good people.
And I can understand that. It's a very difficult position to be in, when you're always stressed like that, and it's not healthy either.
No, wasn't it?
In terms of.
It was scary, I mean, for all of us, we were all throwing together, cobbling together bits and pieces of work to stay in the municipal field. We had a few private clients here and there too, but we put a lot of ourselves out there to do what essentially has been, in really five or six short years, a pretty successful model that has really pushed us along. I think we may be number two now in terms of total towns. We don't want to get much higher than, we certainly don't want 120 towns, but we're really pleased that the product has taken off as much as it has.
You represent 60 now, or is it 12?
No, no, 12.
Well, because I have two here, I was writing my notes, 10 attorneys, 11 towns, is that correct?
No.
Eight lawyers, 11 towns.
Right.
As town council, and probably another 30, 40, 50 as special council on specific projects here and there.
Okay.
One-offs, mostly.
Mark, yeah, Mark or, you know, we were hired recently in Boxford, for example, to represent only the zoning board and historic commission, for just very finite matters. Mark does a lot of zoning rewrites in communities across the Commonwealth. He's done probably more than half the zoning in the Commonwealth, and probably at any given time, 20 to 30 towns. So we'll get finite, we recently were hired in Cohasset through Jay to represent the water commission, for a very finite, specific reason. So, we'll be hired as special counsel, but our general counsel work is with 11 communities.
That's one final question. I'm very familiar with Mark Babrowski's work through the 40B and the 40R, probably the last 10, 15 years. You highlight him a lot in the proposal, and you've been talking about him a lot in your presentation, but he didn't come to the last interview, and he didn't come to this one. And I'm looking at what's here, your secondary contact to Richard Bowen, if there's an opportunity or an issue in who's going to be the contact person, and who's going to be the face of your firm when we have to call? Because I'm a little confused with all the attorneys and all the different.
Right, it's slightly different. We do set it up on the traditional kind of primary contact person thing. Because Rich had a pre-existing relationship doing some work with the town, we felt it was good to have some continuity there. We kind of set it up as a 1A and 1B, because I'm so.
Who's the 1, are you the 1A?
Rich would be, we set it up as Rich being in the letter, the 1A, but we're essentially interchangeable. My guess, my root guess, because I'm so local, is that I think on a lot of day-to-day stuff and office hours, it's so much more convenient for you guys, or for the planning board, or certainly for Kevin to pick up and haul my butt over here. So I see myself as kind of being a. So I see myself as kind of being a co-with Rich. Rich is very good generalist. He doesn't do land use. So his town meeting expertise is second to none. So on those types of things, I expect he would carry a heavier. I think for most everything else, especially the land use, I'd be the first one to go to. For a lot of contract stuff, I think Lisa would be available to you whenever, wherever. And for major projects, land using, Mark would carry the heavier ore, although I would certainly be involved and act as a liaison. He actually wanted to be here tonight and he had just kind of a really bad fire to put out on a project in Westbrook Field, a big solar project that was kind of going awry. And he apologizes he couldn't be here.
And he's currently in Concord? Is that where he lives?
He's in the Concord office.
He's in the Concord. That's our main and our billing office as well. Three of the, four of the attorneys are there.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
But just to be clear about, so it's seamless for you, your contact is going to be Rich. And then, you know, if you say, "Well, you know, you can ask for somebody specifically," but then Rich will say, "Jay, you know, here, this is, you know, this is, can you go to the zoning board hearing tonight?" or whatever. So...
Everything would go through Rich.
Yeah, your contact would be Rich and then you don't have to worry about where it goes. But you'll, it flows really nicely because Jay gave the example in Easton. I do all the contract work in Easton. And so now David just picks up the phone and calls me.
And how many clients or how many contacts, contracts with towns does Rich have?
Rich is Wareham. That's, it takes a fair amount of his time. It's a bigger community going through a difficult transition, actually, and Douglas. And so this would be his third.
Right.
So it's manageable. We try and manage it so that people are always available. And we always, we run a very strong second contact as we've been, as in most of our proposals. Because we have, I've found, and I know a lot of the other firms work on a primary contact too, it can be frustrating not to be able to get your primary contact. He could be in court, he could be in a meeting or anything else.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I did run out. It was my fault. All right. Any last questions? Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Lisa.
Good to see you, Jay.
Nice to see you.
All right. Now, we have somewhat of a full agenda, but where this has been going on, this is the second round of interviews. Do we want to entertain a motion to invite one of these firms back to go into session to negotiate a contract? Do we want to do it now? Do we want to put it off to the end of the agenda to move the other ones forward? It's a pleasure.
I think we should move along and then come back to it just so that, you know, we can talk about our notes and stuff afterwards and have a full discussion.
Okay. At the end, towards the end of this meeting?
One time, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. That way we don't leave these people hanging.
Yeah.
The only caveat is we do have the school committee coming and then we're going into executive session. That executive session is shared with members of the school committee, so maybe we do it after executive session?
I prefer to do it before, if we could.
I just don't want to have the school committee to sit for, a lot of people came...
It's kind of a lot of information for me especially to digest right now. I thought it was a good process, good interviews and good questions. And it's a tough decision. So I would almost be compelled to let us all think about it and then come back at the next meeting and talk about it for 15 minutes and decide then. I mean, that'd be what I'd like to do, but whatever the will of the board is, is fine with me.
I like that idea. I think if we can think about this some more, but then maybe the next meeting, if we just voted on who it is, and I would suggest that if we agree and if Kevin thinks what's the best approach in terms of a fee structure, that whoever we would select, that we would suggest that Kevin would negotiate that in the way that I think Andy did it the last time, right, Mark?
Oh, God. Turning out of the bus there, right?
I remember that one.
I'm not sure. I think it was Randy and Andy and the chairman the last time.
Was it?
I believe it was Mr. Thrash, Randy and Andy. But I would say, we can negotiate what we want to do then. There's another thing to think about throughout this process is the money, the people that, you know, we want to represent the town, location, logistics, everything. There's a lot scrambling. That was a thorough process. So I would just assume move it to the next agenda and have a 15, 20 minute discussion. Everybody's got their thoughts in line instead of being scrambled eggs tonight about it.
We all set as far as coverage then until our next meeting isn't until the 24th?
I would say to the board, if you all wanted to take some time to think about this and do it at the next meeting, I don't see where there's any problem with that. I think if you did it at the next meeting, we still make the break on August 1. If you do it at this meeting, we probably still make the break on August 1. I don't, you know, I mean, you don't want to be changing billings in the middle of the month. That's going to be awkward.
Also not, and if we voted tonight, we're not voting for the contract. We're voting to go into negotiations with the preferred.
Right.
I mean, I've read and reread these books for months now.
I know.
The last interview we had was completely vetted out and thorough. We had time to digest it for this one. This was a half hour each. I'm not sure how much more thinking I can do about it. I'm ready to...
I'm just thinking about a discussion.
I don't want to pressure them, but we just keep putting it off for two weeks and two weeks and two weeks.
Whatever the will of the board, I mean, I am, I'm ready to make a decision. No doubt about it. I just wanted to make sure it was a thorough one. I think it's important. But if you're ready, I have confidence in the board to make the right decision. Let's move forward. We can move forward right now if somebody wants to make a motion.
I move that we go into negotiations with Gellman and Cabral.
Second.
Motion made seconded by Jenny. Any more discussion? Motion was to go into negotiations with Gellman and Cabral. All those in favor? All those opposed? Two carries, five nothing. So could you reach out?
Yeah. Actually, Ms. Chairman, you actually haven't had a contract with council as far back as we can find. So I'm not sure what it is you're intending to negotiate because...
Hourly rate versus...
Well, hourly rate, they've all given you in their proposals. They've given you their hourly rate.
No, because Dick said right here, 10 or 20 minutes, half ago, that he was up to whatever the board wanted to do with the hourly rate or a split hourly rate with some things covered by, you know, what's the word I'm looking for?
Retainer.
Retainer. So he was very open. He said, "He doesn't even want a three-year contract." He said, "The board wants a one or two or three." He didn't care. And I thought it was compelling and honesty and just a way to get back and to want to help Foxborough get through what it's going through and work together with Foxborough again and pick up where we left off and let's move forward. And, you know, while we're at it, I was very impressed with the other client too, very impressed. And somebody has to finish second. And, you know, maybe it doesn't work out with Dick in negotiations and we have a second party to go to, I mean, and see how it goes. But I feel confident the board is 5-0. I think Gellman's coming back.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. See, now we have to get into a whole discussion about what we want Kevin to talk to Dick about, so.
Well, I think if it was like any other contract, if we go in that direction, and I respect the statement that we don't need a contract, I would prefer to have a contract.
Absolutely.
It protects the town.
No, I didn't say you didn't need one. I said you haven't had one.
But at least go into that, yeah. Let's go into that session to discuss it with the town.
I agree. I think you need a contract. I think it's an awfully good idea. The problem is, I don't know what it is you've got in mind because, and I guess what I'm suggesting to you is that before you bring the people in with whom you're going to contract, you need to have your own discussion without that person sitting here in front of you about what is it you want to do.
We can do that in executive session. Can we not?
I don't, no, you can't unfortunately.
Can we come out?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we set up a meeting with you and Dick Gellman and one of us, come up with...
A draft?
A draft. Get that to the point where it's amenable to Dick Gellman and to the two representatives in the town. Then we'll put it on the next item on the agenda under executive session for us to look at that. And then that's what we can critique. And that way we've got 90% of it in front of the board.
Yeah, you wouldn't, I don't think you'd be able to do that in executive session, Jim. I think you have to do it in open.
Open's fine.
If that approach is amenable to the board, what I would suggest is that the board members reach out to Jim or I between now and, let's say, over the next week or so. And if you have any thoughts about ways you want to, things you want to see expressed in that contract, let us know. That way we can get something drafted that's maybe 80 or 90% what you want. So it just minimizes the amount of time you needed.
And we'll get that on the agenda for the July 24th meeting.
Okay.
The next, we're 10 minutes late. I put this on the agenda, the town manager fiscal year 12 caller. A little bit of background to that. If you recall, we went into executive session, the last board, to address concerns that we had that were brought to our attention by our town council on Kevin's contract. And it was based on the prior review and salary adjustment, or in this case, salary non-adjustment. We went into executive session because we were told that there was a pending litigation on that issue. We went through several executive session meetings where we met with town council, labor council. Labor council met with Kevin. We went back and forth. There were some emails exchanged. And at the end of that exercise, still under executive session, at the end of that exercise, there was an amendment to Kevin's contract. And basically, and Jenny, this is more for you because you weren't in those sessions, there was a dispute on the contract. When we were negotiating Kevin's contract, we took the steps of having it towards a merit increase rather than a step increase, which traditionally was done. When we reviewed him, we based it on a merit and I think, not going back into all the reviews from last year, there was some good, some bad, it was in the middle. And we said, "Well, 0.3, that's what everyone's getting. It's average. What we're giving average in town is a 0.3." So we started him off with a zero. Then come to find out Kevin had interpreted the contract that said, even though the caller wasn't in there, it wasn't in his predecessor's either and he got it. And to the point where actually automatically it went into Kevin's paycheck. So when that all came to light, Kevin, I think you paid the town back, right? And I think everyone was a little red-faced, "How did this happen?" We found out it was an automatic thing from years and years and years ago, even though it wasn't in Andy Gale's contract. So it went back and forth with council and to come to an amicable agreement, avoid a lawsuit, we decided to amend his contract that says, "Here's 3%. It's not a cost of living. It's not a raise. It's a 3% that nobody's happy, nobody's sad. It avoids ongoing litigation." And at that point, through Leo and through the past chairman Larry, it was worked out that it was signed. And then it went to Kevin's desk and the copies were distributed. Prior to the election on May 7th, that Friday before the election, Kevin signed it, Larry signed it, and it was distributed. When we were doing Kevin's yearly review this time, I went to look for the meeting minutes to give to Jenny. There was no meeting minutes. We hadn't released them. So in order to do Kevin's review, I put it on the agenda to review the executive session minutes and to release them at 6:45. So he had that information. That was all done. Then I reached out to Leo, our labor council, and I said, "Did we do everything the way that was supposed to be done?" And he said, "Yes, you went in for, because of litigation, you did everything. However, the Mass Open Meeting Law says now that it's released, you have to vote on it in open session." So you can look at it. This is, you know, the horse is out of the bond. Why sign something when you already did? But that's what I'm being told the Open Meeting Law requires. So I sent you an email explaining that. And in order to ratify Kevin's contract amendment in open session, I need a motion that town, labor council gave to us that explains it so we can do it in open session.
So I move that the board confirm the executive session vote of the prior board to resolve the dispute over town manager Kevin Pagels' entitlement to a raise in fiscal year 2012 under his employment agreement with the town by amending the agreement to clarify the basis upon which any future raise would be determined and to provide the town manager with a 3% increase effective July 1, 2011, all as reflected in the document titled Settlement Agreement Addendum to Contract, signed by the town and Mr. Pagels on or about May 4, 2012, in which the board made public at its meeting on June 26. Just hand that into Diane?
I just gave it to her.
Okay.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Five, nothing carries.
Now you know why you need counsel, just to write a motion like that.
Okay. A few minutes on water and sewer. This is a topic I put on here. I think it's probably one of the most important topics that we're going to be addressing this year, hopefully this year and maybe going into next year. And it got 10 minutes. I think what happened when the school committee moved to the end of the agenda, it got reversed. But there's more than 10 minutes of discussion and there's less than 20 minutes on the chairman's update. So I'm going to get a little more time on the sewer issue. Bill, do you want to come up to the table?
Sure.
Are they all here?
Yeah.
Are you?
Oh, my God.
Hi.
Roger's here.
Rich and Roger, yep. So the reason I asked Water and Sewer to come here tonight, following the last meeting that we had with the craft organization, they came to the table and they said they want to work amicably towards addressing the sewer issue or the sewer opportunities that the town has. I don't want to go back too far, but just to kind of put it in perspective. Years ago, Foxborough had an opportunity to be a partner in a tri-town sewer district program with Mansfield and Norton. At that time, Foxborough opted out, so we're customers right now. All right? So anytime you flush a toilet and there's a pipe that goes by and it goes to Mansfield, it gets treated and we get charged. And we're not sitting at the table as partners, we're a customer. Over the last several years, Jay Barrows has worked with the water and sewer department and the other towns of Mansfield. And they use words like inter-basin transfer waivers and working together and regional approach. And they got the state, the DEP, to say, "We can expand, this group can expand that treatment facility and kind of think outside of the box." Long story short, kind of on the shoulders of the water and sewer, it went to town meeting and it got defeated. And, you know, I was on the other side of that. I didn't agree with it and for kind of simple reasons, that it was kind of a program that forced people to tie into it. And it wasn't quite all there on the numbers. So it did get defeated, but a lot of things have changed in the last year or so. The planning board has worked very hard with a master planning consultant, and some of you guys were at those meetings. And we're finding out very strongly that sewer is an integral part of Foxborough in order to even keep status quo or to do any type of future expansion. What's coming down the pike soon is Mansfield and Norton are both going to town meetings in the fall or working in that direction to get into this program with or without us. If we participate, there's an opportunity to get a 30-year bond at 0% for $7.5 million to do this, which is far in between these years to do it. So if we don't jump on it, we're going to be customers again. And what's happening now, you've got pent-up businesses that can't come into town because there's no sewer. You've got businesses that are here and they can't expand because there's a moratorium. And you've got residents kind of somewhere in the middle. You've got businesses that have extra capacity, but they can't sell it because of the restrictions on being a customer rather than a client. So I'm kind of painting this picture because there's a lot involved. And we're kind of at the decision point now. Last week, last meeting when the craft organization came in, they wanted to work with us. They obviously would like some concessions because they need to, I think for them to do well, they need to expand and they need some things that... they need to expand, and they need some things that are outside of the box, and they're willing to work with us on working out the sewer. And it could be as simple as paying money to the tribe town, and we work back and forth. So what I said at that meeting, I was going to reach out to the chairman of the water and sewer, and the chairman of the planning board, so I met with Kevin and Bill, and Kevin jumped in and out of the meeting. And I think where we're going with this is kind of a town approach rather than a water and sewer approach, that if we can get consensus with the planning board, the water and sewer, and the selectmen to say, this is what the town needs, I think it has a lot more potential to get solved, and it has to get solved quickly. I see it as two kind of parallel paths that's going to diverge around fall town meeting. If we can get the town meeting to buy into a program that says, here's a sewer expansion, here's how it's going to be funded, it's not going to be forced on anybody, it's going to be a voluntary buy-in, and there's a matrix of who can sell and who can buy, all contingent on that tri-party agreement going through, that's a home run, and I think that's the direction that we're going to go in. At the same time, we're going to put an effort to working with the patriots organization, the craft organization, in seeing how it works out with them on if we can come up to an agreement. Now, we've done this before, it blew up with the billboards and the past ten million dollars that was supposed to be done on the treatment plan that was never done because the town voted down. So it's a little bit of a mess to put all our eggs in that basket and get to the fall and have it fall apart. I think it puts the town in a dire situation that we've done it again, and Mansfield goes, and Norton goes, and we're sitting kind of in the dark again. So two things, Bill, you're going to go back to your board and talk to it, Kevin Weinfeld is going to go back to his board. And I put it on this agenda so we can talk about it, to see if we get at least initial buy-in to go in that direction. We talked about putting a committee together. Bill said, either if it's not yourself, someone from the sewer committee, water and sewer. Kevin committed to either himself or someone from the planning board. I think we should have somebody on the selectmen, perhaps somebody that's not an elected official, a resident. I know Dave Brownhead approached me early, he's got a lot of experience with the zoning board, with the liquor license, because that's what's on the table on the other side on that list that's been kicking around in the newspaper that got released from executive session. So if there's a committee, and I did reach out to Larry Thomas from the AdCom, because I very much want them to participate. However, being on the AdCom, you cannot participate, and as you know from the last exercise.
We've learned already, yes.
But he thinks it's a good idea, and we'll come to all the meetings as an observer, and then bring that information back to the AdCom. So I think we've got the start of something good, if we can all collectively, it's, you know, July, August, September, October, we've got a few months to do it. But collectively, get the information, and at the same time, work with Kevin, his staff, Randy, I always look at you and forget your name, I'm sorry.
Roger.
Roger Hill.
You do.
To give, I know, to give the information that we need so we can move forward, so.
It's a four-letter word.
I know. So that's, and I invited these guys, you can say, I'm all wet from this, or, you know, we concur, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to kind of chime in here.
We concur. I think, you really talk about two things. Number one, you're talking about the negotiating, the committee that will negotiate, or the group that will negotiate with the patriots.
Yep.
About the many issues that are available.
On the one path.
On the one path. And we're all looking for win-wins there.
Yep.
But recognizing that we've been down that path before, and recognizing that there are some complex issues there that may not be resolved in time for us to really go ahead, we have been proposing that we, instead of doing a betterment approach and expanding the sewer by sticking laterals out into the residence areas, that we all sit and realize that the master plan is saying, we need sewerage in town, we have got to have more capacity than we have today. Couple that with the fact that Mansfield is getting ready to go ahead, we really believe. Now, we've said this many times, but we believe they are.
Right, I know, I know, yeah.
They've done their master plan, that they're getting serious.
Yeah.
Frustrated because
Right.
we and Norton have not come up with money. We're saying, we can buy into that plant expansion at this point in time, get about two hundred fifty thousand gallons per day of additional flow for seven and a half million We on Water and Sewer cannot in good conscience say that the current sewer rate payers should pay that, because the current sewer rate payers don't need that expansion.
Right.
It's the town that needs that expansion, and will need to sell off then that capacity when we've got it.
Yeah.
To people who need it, or, you know, for
Right.
further development center of town and so forth. So the tough problem is that we believe we need to ask the town for something in the order of seven and a half million dollars at a fall town meeting, which would, if it passes, would give us the ability to go ahead, get into that agreement with Mansfield and Norton, increase our capacity some years, three years down the road, so when the plant is built, expanded, and have the ability then, at least to have capacity, we get off the moratorium we're in here in town.
Right.
And we haven't said a word about expanding the sewer out into anybody's neighborhoods. You know, for folks here, I mean, you know, not to use Bert Delaney's name in vain, but, you know, I'd like a program that Bert's happy with. But I think this might be one, okay? The only things that are the same about what we're talking about now and before are the word sewer, and the fact that Bill Early is still here. I mean, everything else is different on this program. What we're talking about here is not expanding out into neighborhoods, betterments for people and all that, we're talking about buying capacity so that we can work the things we need to do here in town with respect to
So that we don't miss the vote again, right?
Right.
Basically, because we did.
Right.
We missed the vote, and we wouldn't be in this situation.
Now, it's great to talk about how good this is going to be, but seven and a half million dollars is a lot of money. We have some thoughts about coming up with ways to mitigate that, and we will be working on that, but we'd like a scenario that says, the board of selectmen and the planning board are in favor of this, we are working as a town to try to do this. None of us know what town meeting will do in the fall, but we presume that it'll pass, we treat it like it's going to pass, and we'll try to put together some mitigating conditions to try to bring that number down. Basically, we're selling off ahead of time, selling off some of that capacity.
That we can't sell right now because we're handcuffed.
The people who need
But we can am, we can amag it though, yeah.
So what's basically this means, so that the board, our board, has representative in this committee, is that what we're trying to do here?
Well, the two paths, one, you're going to do the heavy lifting, the water and sewer on the warrant article come fall, and we're going to show you our support that will work with you. The other path is, we do want to put a committee together to work with the craft organization, and you're going to lend us one of your members, whether it's yourself or somebody else, planning board, a selectman, and then maybe a few others. So I don't think we need a formal vote at this, but is this something that you guys want to move towards? And if so, is there somebody on the board that would like to be that committee member? And just a few things about the committee, I think there is a way with the open meeting law to have it not open to the public, but I think having gone down that road before, and even if there's an ability to have it as a non-public and then report back, I think if the selectmen are involved, and I said this to somebody else recently, these meetings are going to be public, they're not going to be televised, because Foxborough Cable Access TV may not want to do that, but they'll be advertised, and people are welcome to participate in it. And I think that's going to be advantageous when we get to the eleventh hour and everyone's got the same information. So I think that's the way that we want to run it.
And I think that that's the way that the craft group has proposed it anyway, and I think we discussed that the last time. I think that there are certain things that, if it goes into a negotiation type of a discussion though, for, if it expands out to, let's say, you know, billboards or something, I think that part needs to be in the executive session probably for the water and sewer, wouldn't it?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying that's the way it's going to go, but
Well, I mean, it's not two private companies working together, it's a public entity and a private.
Right.
I think it has to be in the open. I think if there's problems and there's losses
But like a negotiation type thing?
Well, we're not even at that crossroad yet, let's get to that point, you know, let's not put the cart before the horse, you know? Let's get the committee together. I think, Linda, I anticipate you showing a strong interest in this, so is that something you want to do?
I just want to get it done, yeah.
Yeah. So would you want to take the board, be the member of the board, be part of this?
I could do that.
So, you know, I do think we need
I think the man in the green shirt speaks with great wisdom. Good idea, in other words.
I mean, we've been, we've talked this thing
Where do you get there?
dead for the six years that I've been on the board, so
Oh, it gets aggravated, and the timeline's already there, believe it or not, it's already, right now, we're already late, once again, off the starting gate, we're stuck. So, I mean, I think the board does need to make a formal motion to create a committee, and it's going to be board of selectmen committee, and
Is that what we want to do?
I think so.
Sure, you could do a formal motion, do consensus, whatever you like. You know, you don't have to do anything in particular, you just want to footnote it in the minutes that you're authorizing this subcommittee of the board. But as Mark said, you know, why not wait until you've got something before you start worrying about what you may not have to decide for two months or three months?
Okay.
So is it the consensus that Linda goes with the committee, the committee's formed, and then you'll come back and let us know?
She'll, I know Linda, she'll take fantastic notes, and she'll report back to us like she always did back in oh-five and oh-seven, and look forward to it, and reading, being part of it, so. And then you also have, so Linda will reach out to the planning board, and obviously Bill and his board, and you said David Brown showed interest?
He did, and I
Any other interested, should we announce to the town that there's somebody else interested in being part of this committee, to, you know, contact the selectmen's office, or?
Well, maybe you're going to meet with your board and the planning board, let them meet first, and if there's a need for an extra person. I mean, you don't want to get twelve people in it.
Yeah, that would make it a maximum set.
Could you explain why the advisory committee wouldn't have a member on this committee?
Yeah, the advisory committee is appointed, and they try to be autonomous.
Oh, okay.
When something's in front of them, they don't want to have a bias of being in.
Oh, okay.
They'll send liaisons to
And they have to vote on it.
Yeah. But you said Larry could be an observer.
Larry's going to observe just for that link, because
Yeah, okay.
At the end of this exercise, everything's going to go through the AdCom to support the warrant or not, so at least he has that.
Yeah.
And it's no different, they always send liaisons to the school committee, to the fire and police, so it's just a little bit, you know, we're asking them earlier on this one.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I know when we were talking about it last time, we were just talking about having council present for these meetings, and then I just wanted to throw out there, having finance there where you're negotiating, where you'll be discussing things that will impact the town financially, water and sewer financially, I just thought that that might make sense to have the financial person present, too.
Well, I'm sure once they get going to that, Pat Randy would want to be part of it, and wouldn't be part of the committee, but he'd be going there anyways, I mean, he's always going to be concerned with financing, but
It's probably at the day and one of this, Kevin, I think.
Yeah, we talked about that with the group, it's Kevin and Randy and
That's when we hand over the information and let the
Roger.
big guys do what they do.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the wisdom here is for elected-appointed, non-staff officials to have this meeting and sort of flesh out whatever the proposal is and whoever you can take it. And staff should not get involved until there's something
That's right.
that's worth looking at.
Okay.
And then we would be involved in the capacity of advising, you know, the committee what we see. But I think it's very important at this point that this committee have the freedom to operate and have a discussion and see where it takes you.
I agree.
No council present?
I think it's
Not necessarily needed.
It's not a good idea to have, how do I say this politely, without offending my lawyer friends? Things get complicated when lawyers are in the room. And I think what you really need at this point is a non-lawyer, non-legal conversation between town officials and our biggest business partner, have a nice, amicable discussion about where can we take this relationship? And I have incredible confidence in Bill and the other participants that have been mentioned, that they'll be able to do a fine job with that. And then once it gets gelled into something, then you can get the lawyers and all those folks involved.
Sure. Okay, guys, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Am I picking up the sense that the board selects, generally accepts the idea of going to town meeting with a warrant article for seven and a half million bucks?
Oh, go down that road.
All right.
On the concept, I think that's what you're hearing.
I think what we're looking for is at least to know that you're not dead against it as a board.
Absolutely.
If you're dead against it as a board, then we've got to do something different. We do not want any more dead-end approaches.
Well, there's other avenues that you're chasing right now, so
And we'll chase other things, we will work on, okay.
And if you're looking for a formal vote, I feel
I'm not looking for a formal vote.
it's premature because there's no details out there, but
No, absolutely, I understand that.
What you're hearing from the board is, the sooner
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing us, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Look at that, eight-thirty-one, one minute late for the school committee. I'm going to leave off my chairman's update because I'm probably going to bore you with that stuff anyway, so. Other than, you had one topic you wanted, next meeting, we're trying to get the open meeting law, remote participation back on, Ginny's been working with all the different departments.
Okay.
And kind of have, you're going to have a write-up of what the consensus is from the boards, and then we're going to make a decision.
Yeah.
Do we want to do it or not?
Right.
If we do, make that decision.
It's everything, yeah.
Everyone can do it, they don't have to.
Yeah.
But if we say no, nobody can.
Right.
And then the last thing, the trash contract, ton of calls, ton of emails, you've all told me.
Yes.
Kevin and probably Roger put together a fact sheet.
It was quite a group effort, Roger, Kevin Duquette, Roger Hill, Kevin Duquette, Randy, there might have been a couple of other folks involved in it, too, and they did it with smashing light speed between nine AM and mid-afternoon, and did a terrific job getting the Q and A put together. I apologize, board, we really should have thought of that, I should have thought of that. But in the busy schedule, we didn't, but it was a great idea. We got that put together, I think it answers a lot of questions that people are asking. It's out on the website, we gave a copy to Frank, wherever Frank went, hopefully to publicize. We're getting calls and we're sending it to people. We've got a stack out there, I know the board members, Mark was here earlier tonight, doing the office hours.
Yeah.
And gave them out, and so I think we're getting word out there, and I would encourage the board, if you get other questions that you think are common, let us know, we can do some more additions. The company itself is going to be getting a letter out in the next couple of days to all the current enrollees in the program, which is about eighty percent of the town, explaining to them, you know, the new procedures, if you want to sign up, you know, here's what you do. And we think it's going to be pretty seamless, so I don't think there'll be any big problems.
Excellent. And at this point, we're very happy to say we have the school committee wandering around here. You want to come up to the table? Thank you. We've got four, and Bruce Knopfak yet?
Hey, Jim.
Hey, everybody.
The blue shirt, colorblind.
Ladies, gentlemen.
Great. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming, and I know a couple of you guys have moved your vacations around to get everybody here. On the middle of July is difficult, so both full boards, I appreciate it. The reason that we're here is because one of the school committee members has resigned, and by statute, we have to have a joint meeting between the selectmen and the school committee. A lot of people saying, why does a selectman have to get involved? I said that to Bev, why do we have to get involved?
As it's written.
Because it's written. So all I wanted to say was, I thank you guys for coming, I'm going to turn it over to you, you have to open up your meeting.
Yes.
And then I think at the end of, there's five applicants, you worked out whatever questions, and Bev had called me earlier, that, you know, because they're each ten minutes, they're going to run the questions. At the end of this exercise, we're going to have one vote for every person, and I think that vote is how we move forward, correct?
Right.
So I'll leave it up to you.
All right, I'd like a motion to open our meeting, please.
So move.
Second. All in favor? Our meeting will consist tonight of interviews for the vacancy
Yeah, Bev. Oh, thanks. For the vacancy on the school committee to be filled as an interim position between now and our election in May. The candidates we will interview are Marsha Maxwell, Christina Bellinger, Doris Asha Pa Olson, Michael Davison, Brian Walton. After the appointment is made, we will adjourn into executive session for the discussion of health insurance discussion group for the purpose of the employee health insurance[1792.47] initiative, non-union negotiation. The school committee will not return to open session after that.
Great.
Okay. First of all, I would like to have everyone know that we were very pleased to have five applicants step forward to offer to help serve on the school committee for this interim period. In particular, thanks to everybody on your board, secretaries on my board, who have changed their vacation plans to be here tonight to make this move, help move forward. I want everyone to know we have checked through with our executive director, Glenn Kuchar. This interview process does not have to be in public. It could have been done by a smaller committee at the, on the school committee, a recommendation made to the school committee in full and brought forward to you. But because of the interest, it is being conducted in public. All of the applicants are welcome to stay in the room. It is an open process. These are open meetings. And of course, if they were asked to leave, they, all they do is turn on their cellphones and watch anyway these days with our delightful technology. So, are there any questions? They are made, you may stay through the entire process. All right, maybe we can ask Marsha Maxwell to come forward, please. How would you like us to do this?
Well, I'd be more comfortable the applicant sat down at the white table.
Well, why don't we just slide?
Slide around a little bit, we can get closer.
Slide one way. Is that okay?
That's great.
There you go. Thank you. What we would like to ask you to do is tell us a little bit about yourself. What attracted you to applying for this position? And what do you, what would you like to accomplish during your interim period between now and May?
The thing that attracted me to it is it's been something that I've thought about for some time, and now that I'm retired and have accomplished some of the goals that I initially set up for those retirement years, it seemed like a great opportunity to bring some of my skills forward to help during an interim period. I think from the point of view of what I can bring, I am a retired teacher, but we have that skill. The thing that I can do is by augmenting that, I've had the opportunity, when I worked at Bryant College, to support faculty, to help them achieve their goals. While I was at the Foxborough Company, I had the opportunity to train people, to manage a department, to help educators formulate goals and objectives. At both HMV and Bryant College, the goal process, the budget process that had to link with the goal process, the evaluation of whether, you know, goals have been met, all of that was incorporated. So I think from my perspective, I can bring different aspects of the educational process, supporting educators, leading educators, evaluating educators, all of those types of things, is what I have in my background. And that's kind of why I said now would be a great opportunity to, to offer those skills to the school committee.
Is there another question somebody would like to ask?
How many years have you been in town? 30 years?
I've been...
So you've seen a lot of change in the school system over the years?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. I have been in town for 30 years. My daughter went through the school system, seeing an incredible number of changes over the years, except perhaps for our address, that's the only thing maybe that stayed constant. It's, and it's been very interesting, from the athletic programs, the academic programs, everything that the school system offered has been incredible. Difficult times, from time to time, where phone calls had to be made. And I've got to say, anytime I called anybody at the schools, they were right there, what could they do, how could they help, and always, you know, made any changes that were necessary to accommodate any of those personal needs. Fantastic.
You know, way back when, I always questioned whether or not someone who'd been in education should or could sit on a school board. Having been on the school committee as long as I have, I know what a valuable asset you are, because you really supplement what we do and how we do it. And I think sometimes you have to make the tough choices and the tough decisions, and I think people who are in on the ground floor and understand education do have a little bit of an upper hand when it comes to making policy changes or whatever.
Absolutely. And given where the town is right now on the evaluation process for the teachers, I think that's the thing that kind of scares me the most. The way in which things are said is going to be so important. It's not always going to be what's said, it's going to be how it's said. That whole process can tend to be very threatening as to how you approach an educator and say, this is what we're going to do relative to your performance and how you're viewed, you know, in the school system. So I think that's going to be a major issue, you know, at the school committee. I know you're, you're looking at it and you're going to have to address it. And that's something that, having been in the classroom and confronted with some of those, and also having had the management experience, that I can hopefully, you know, assist you in some of those difficult decisions.
Marsha, I think one of the toughest things I've seen over the years is, you know, sometimes we put in different directives or whatever, we pick something for math or science or whatever, and I think the hardest thing is when we find that it's not working, and being brave enough to admit that it's not working, and maybe we need to find a different course of action for these students in order for them to succeed. So I want someone who will honestly take a look at these things, that when we say, hey, we put this program in place, but it's not working, and I think as a committee, we have to stand together and say, okay, we have to look for a better way.
Absolutely. One size does not fit all. And the DOE can, you know, put some great goals and objectives out there, but when it comes to, from the special ed kids to the highly accelerated kids, one size does not fit all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Oh, yes. You may.
It's nice to meet you. Obviously, it seems to me that the direction of the school committee is kind of split and going in two different directions. You're going to be possibly cast into that conflicting situation. Do you have the capability, be able to handle that, separating personalities from, you know, friendships, from decisions? It becomes controversial, and you get a lot of flack for it.
Absolutely.
Sometimes you lose relationships, sometimes you lose friends, sometimes you gain some. Everything's a juggling act. So how do you think you'd handle that pressure?
I think I can handle that. I've had experience with that. My years at Bryant College, I supported faculty, the egos of faculty, the timeliness of when things are done, and what you may do for one causes a slowdown for something that you were going to do for someone else. So you get to learn how to juggle. But more importantly, I think the thing is, you learn how to really communicate with people, and to sit down and to explain why you're doing things. And I think if people understand that you've made a decision for these concrete reasons, it goes a long way. And that goes back to how you say things, to have facts, and to listen. That's absolutely critical, too. If you've got people that want to go in two directions, you really have to listen very hard, communicate back that you've understood what's going on, and that's the, otherwise you just have mass chaos. And as I say, I think my experience at Bryant in dealing with faculty helped me in that regard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marsha.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward. So Bev, just so there's no confusion, I'm giving up my chairmanship to you, so you can usher people in and out and
Okay.
address questions or whatever.
Thank you.
So I'll just sit and participate like everyone else.
Tina Ballinger.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. I guess I should sit closer, I'm not used to the microphones. I'm Tina Ballinger. My husband, Bill, and I have lived here in Foxborough for 12 years in January. We have two sons in the Foxborough Public Schools. My older son will be in seventh grade, and my youngest son starts at the Ahern in fifth grade in the fall. I've participated in, I'm interested in being on the school committee, because I've participated at the PTO level, on school council. I was on the advisory committee for the last three years and just finished my term in June, and was liaison to the school department. So I'm familiar with our budget and the process and the issues that are pending before the school department right now. So I, I am willing to work. I am encouraged and completely in sync with Mrs. Spinelli's statement last August that the school department needs to go from great to greater, and I'd like to be a part of that. Do you have any questions for me?
I do, Tina.
Yes.
I served on the advisory committee, too, before I became a school committee member, and I'm just wondering how you think that could certainly be an advantage and something that you would be bringing forth to the school committee? Just maybe some of your experience being on AdCom and being a liaison, because I actually was a liaison as well.
Well, as a liaison to the school department, I worked closely with Mrs. Spinelli and before her, Dr. Martis, and Paul Jackson, and before, and Bill Yucknow, the business administrator on the school budget. So I'm very familiar with the budgets and the ins and outs. I've been through the entire binder, and I know the challenges that the school department faces, and also how, when you're on the advisory committee, you see the balance that's needed between the municipal side of our town government and our school side, and how valuable both sides are to our community, and the need to work together for the best interests of everybody in this town, both our students and our senior population and everybody else. So I, and also, you know, on the advisory committee, you work collaboratively, you have to respect everybody's point of view, you get very diverse points of view, and you get a lot of experience listening and weighing very conflicting points of view and coming to your own reasoned decision based on the facts before you. So I think I could bring that to the table at the school committee level.
Tina, you have a legal background as well?
Yes. I attended and graduated from George Mason University School of Law in 1994, and before my son was born, I practiced government contracts law and construction litigation for a law firm outside of Washington, D.C. for a number of years, and enjoyed it very much. And then when Jack was born, I decided to stay home with him and focus on raising my family, and also have the opportunity to volunteer and serve in my community, so very fortunate to be able to do that.
Any particular experience with open meeting law?
Well, yeah, I mean, lawyers are always taught to avoid even the appearance of impropriety, so there you go.
Tina, obviously, you're well-known town. You've done a lot, all you do is volunteer, we see each other, all, everybody in this room, at the same functions, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, everything. So now you're taking this consideration, you get appointed to the school committee, now you've got to deal with the controversy. Bruce, and you are on the different side of the fence on something, it becomes a little passionate. How do you retain your relationship, your control, and make the right decision for the town? I mean, it's going to get that way, you know it is. So, I mean, are you prepared for that?
Well, I mean, I think you have to be able to respect one another's opinions, but stick with the courage of your convictions, and at the end of the day, we all have the best interests of our town at heart. I may come at a different point of view than Bruce, but I respect his opinion, I would hope he would respect mine, and that we could work out some sort of solution. I mean, you've got to get to a compromise to move forward.
Would your plans be to just fulfill this year's term or run? What was your long-term planning? I mean, I know it's all of a sudden a surprise that we even have to do this, but would you consider running in the spring, or is this just something you wanted to do for 10 weeks or 10 months?
Well, I mean, I would consider it, but I don't think I'd make any promises tonight.
Wise woman.
The appointments for the year, I would certainly want to see how it goes, but I wouldn't rule it out, that's for sure. My kids still have a long time in the, and, you know, we love this town. I want my kids to come back and raise their kids here, so, you know, the more we can do to make the town a better place, and our schools are a huge part of that, the better.
I think with respect to conflict, we served together, just so you know, on the advisory committee. And then when I moved to selectmen, there was a couple of issues that we disagreed on.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a good process, it was professional. One of them might have been the meals tax, I think you were for it, as all you guys were.
I was right.
But I was pretty passionate about it, and I think you were passionate about it, but it was always professional, and I enjoyed the back and forth. And you're right, the advisory committee, there's a lot of disagreements with the people thinking they're doing the best thing for the town, and you handled that very well.
I enjoyed my term on the advisory committee tremendously, you know, all three chair people, Brian Walton was chair, you were chair, and John Gray. They had very different styles, and I learned so much. I would recommend participating in the advisory committee to anybody who is interested in learning, you know, the ins and outs of the town and the town budget. I learned more about how this town functions than, there's so much more to learn, I mean...
Like making sausage, that's what they keep...
No comment on it.
What do you see as the biggest challenge for school committees?
Well, I think if you look at the results of the climate and culture survey, I think some of the negatives in the climate and culture survey are the biggest challenges facing the school committee. I think particularly addressing the issues on school safety and bullying, which I know there've been great steps made in that, but the responses to those questions in the survey were a little disheartening. I can't remember the exact numbers, but I remember that being one of the biggest concerns when we discussed it. I've been attending these, Mrs. Spinelli and Dr. Martis before her has this parent leaders' advisory council meetings once a month for members of the school council, people who serve on PTO boards, and really any parent who's interested in attending. I've been going to those, gosh, five years? Five, six years? Back when Bruce and I were on the school council together. And I think that was one of the things that came up, and I do see that as being a big challenge facing the school committee this year.
Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Expressing your interest. Doris Ashepa Olson.
I think I know most of you from TV.
From TV. You're not racing to get our autographs, though.
No, well, that's later.
That comes later.
Do you want to advise your way back one, too?
I was, I was on the, well, I'll leave, Scott. What's your first question?
Well, we'd like to know what has attracted you to apply for this, and...
You know, that's a good question. I think that the board of selectmen kind of threw it out at one of the meetings. You know, all of you came here, six or seven, eight, 100 of you, wanted to come to the town meeting. Well, of course, that number dropped really. And then I said... And then, I said, well, and then I was watching one of your meetings again, and I just realized you're looking for, you know, an interim person to step in. I do have the educational background, unlike several others. I, you know, I used to teach, although I taught in Norwood, but my daughter went through Foxborough Schools. And you get involved in PTA and PAC and, you know, making up the school handbook at the high school and all that kind of thing. But yet, you make these friends, like Bev is Bill's mom and that's Diane's mom. I mean, you make these lifelong friends when you're involved in schools. And I think you have to take that with you if you volunteer for another position. So, I think I'm coming from that position. I have the time. I actually have subbed in Foxborough, and I recently saw some science lessons. They were talking about viscosity in the second grade with paint. I'm like, wow! And then, they were doing simple machines at the Borough School. I'm thinking, I couldn't have done that in, you know, college. But you go back and you realize, gee, these are great things that are going on in school. And the Spanish program, I think, is remarkable that that's still all the way through, that, you know, kids in the second grade or even kindergarten can say good morning to in Spanish, and I look foolish because I only know, like, three Swedish words or something. But I find all those things interesting, and I just said, well, I do have the time. I still work in education. In the winter, I work for a testing company called Weststat, and they do the NAEP testing. And I'm one of the people that goes in and tests, and I've been in at least 50 different schools in the last three years. And you do meet, there's definitely a climate in the school that you can pick up on, especially if you're a teacher. Within 20 minutes, it might be legitimate or it might be a little skewed, but money does make a difference as far as I'm concerned. If you go to Childstone Middle School and you go to Westwood, there's a big difference on what you're dealing, excuse me, dealing with. But I think a smart child or an advanced child will do well anywhere, but you have to worry about the ones who aren't in that ballpark. And I think having had a reading background and a classroom teacher's background, I recognize that. And as Martha was saying, that is an expertise that you kind of carry around with you. Of course, it drives my husband crazy. He says, I'm not a fourth grader, but that's his problem. But he does volunteer work for the town, too, and I think he gets a lot out of it. And I think at this point in my life, I, you know, I could really do that.
What do you see as a challenge for the school committee right now, and how would you like to address that during your interview?
Well, I did look, there are challenges. There are everyday challenges, obviously. I'm getting kids on the bus is one thing, but I think it's always going to be financial. Foxborough is unique that it has a lot of money coming from the stadium and, you know, the meals tax. They haven't had to do the layoffs. I mean, I've taught in, well, three different systems. I've gone through many a layoff, and they've gone by seniority. I think the new evaluation process for the new teachers is going to be quite a lot to handle, too. Obviously, they didn't want seniority. But I think financial is always going to be the biggest thing with teachers. It's going to be salaries and how much you can spend on books. Having been on many, you know, basal selection committee or whatever, it always comes down to the bottom line of money. The technology program, definitely, you know, there's a lot of money invested in there. I can remember when our kids were in school, that was a big thing about whether you're going to buy Apple or whatever computer. I mean, that's, kids today are so more advanced in technology. I think there's probably a time lag about what the kids actually have in school is what they have at home. So, I think technology and salaries and textbooks, you know, just the latest and the best because that's what you see in some of the best schools. I know someone else mentioned the bullying. I think way back when Calamica was principal at the Ahern, and Bill Palladino also, they did a lot of consensus training. And as a teacher, I was trained in, like, anti-bullying kind of things. And we always said, well, someone has to stand up and say, I don't like what you're doing. That was kind of the way we're going. And I think, I don't think that works, because I only knew one 10-year-old that actually said that. I don't like the way you're treating my friend. And it's, I think that's kind of come full circle, too, because it does exist. As a teacher, most of it never happened in front of you. You know, you didn't really see it. It was always done behind your back. And I think teachers have to recognize that things like that happen. But I think having a new superintendent and the money, and I don't think this is really disruptive right now, one person leaving. I think, I think the school committee has gone very smoothly for many years now. I haven't seen any big arguments or anything. It's not like other things that happen in town.
So, you watch those meetings?
I do watch them. But I was at that meeting, and I think that's true. I mean, if you have a lot to say, you should put yourself out there and, you know, volunteer to do something.
How do you feel about the percentage of what the town, the salary has? Do you believe, you know, it should be a 70-30 split between the schools and the municipalities? Do you believe it should be a 72-28? How do you feel about that? I mean, there's a big chunk of the town that goes to schools.
Historically--
And people think it's, usually, there's people that don't have kids in the school system think it's too much, and people that have kids in the school system always think it's not enough. How do you feel? Do you think there should be a percentage every year set to each side, or do you think it should fluctuate with different situations?
Well, I think the school department is pretty thorough about going through their budgets, and I think the split right now is probably legitimate. Most of the salary takes up a lot of the budget. I think that's about 80%. It's always teacher salaries. And to get good administrators and to keep good teachers, you have to, you know, have a decent salary. I think that's legit. I'm on the other side, though, because I only had one child that went through the system. And we did move to Foxborough because of the schools. And, but part of me says, well, it's always got to be the best. I think the superintendent going from great to greater is definitely saying something. Like, you can't do it on a shoestring. And like I said, having visited 50 schools over, you know, three years, it's like money discounted.
Do you believe that, in size of classroom, do you believe that, you know, when we all, most people in school, I think the average was 34, 35 in a classroom from when I went to school--
When I went to school or you?
When I did. There was probably less people when you went to school. I mean, I went to a focus school, so there was 35. Well, the population of Foxborough was a lot smaller then, is what I'm saying. And today, people panic. If you say anything over 22 or 20, how do you feel about that?
Well, I think parents, having gone that route, you get very possessive and defensive of your child in that classroom. And as much as you might want to say to PTA, you're interested in the other 22, you're really only interested in yours, usually. I think there is a big difference between, I mean, I taught in Brockton one year, and I had 36 kids in a reading group. There's no way you can spend five seconds with everybody. So, you know, and teachers are taught to group and set up, you know, learning stations and all that kind of thing, but it does come one-on-one time. I mean, you want to talk to your kids every day, you know? So, it has to be a smaller class. And there, there's a lot going on, too. I mean, some of it's very self-directed in a classroom, but some of it, you'd need the teacher to present the lesson. And not every, I mean, I look great if it's a top math group and the brightest kid's in front of me and going to MIT. I look like a great teacher, but the kids in the back who aren't getting it need my attention also. And I think that's when the face-to-face contact really comes down to small class size.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry you had so many kids in your class.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You had so many kids in your class.
I think we all had a lot of kids in our class back then. I don't think, the towns, obviously, were all mill towns around here. They didn't have the revenue that we have today for the schools. It's obvious. Things have transitioned in the last 30 years. It's amazing. But if they had to transition back, where do you cut? Do you go to block? I mean, they could say we lose this stadium, just, NFL goes bust, and we have no stadium in three years. Where does the income come from? Now, you've lost millions of dollars in revenue. Do you cut 50, 60 teachers, or do you increase size or capacity of children per room? I mean, it's something that's very possible that could happen rapidly.
No, while Bill Belichick's there.
You watch that, too, then.
What does he say? It is what it is.
Yeah, he's got a personality, all right, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. We could interview each of you a minimum 20 minutes or half an hour. Michael Davison, please.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I really appreciate it. My name's Michael Davison. I've been in this town since 2002, since I returned from overseas. However, my grandparents grew up, lived in this town. The house I own's been in the family since 1943. So, I'm really familiar with the town of Foxborough. As most of you know from the papers and everything else, I am either a retired Air Force officer or a flight test engineer. Actually, do both. I test airplanes, test airplanes and rotorcraft for a living. I don't admit much to the rotorcraft part because they're, in my opinion, they're tools of the devil. And you're probably wondering, given the qualified applicants who came before me, what I'm doing on the board. That's a good question. What I bring to the table are a handful of things. In my profession, in order to survive the 20 years of test flying, you need to be very analytical. You need to have the ability to separate emotion and what you feel from the facts and deal with the facts. And I'll be honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, those who don't do not survive. I have one of the few professions probably in town that actually has a fatality rate. So, I do bring to the table, and the reason I volunteered for this job was that I felt that my analytical abilities, my ability to separate emotion from and look at the facts objectively, and the ability to look at both sides of an issue was very important. And I also, you know, since I was in the military, I have a great deal of management experience, and I've also brought a lot of stability to various teams that I've led. And I thought that would be important to the town. I'll be upfront that if I do get this post, I will not run in May. Okay? What I want to do is provide stability to the school committee if I'm selected and then let people who are more qualified and certainly want the job, I'd say more qualified, but certainly want the job for longer periods than I do. It's my goal to serve the town and to do what's best for the town, not for my own personal gain. Answer some of your questions, Mark, about conflict. The best way to put it is, and I apologize for telling this story. I was in a country called Uzbekistan when 9/11 occurred, and I was responsible for, one of the things I was responsible for was negotiating the basic rights for U.S. forces. And if you've ever negotiated with Soviets, there is nothing quite like it in the world. Because first of all, they'll scream at you. Secondly, they threaten you with guns, which is always entertaining. So, I'm really used to dealing with conflict.
We don't get quite that upset on the school committee.
I hope, I hope not.
Well, we haven't today. I will just say this. We have not yet today. You're not going for the border.
Well, you know, well, ma'am, as they say, day ain't over yet, you know? No one, no one in my luck will be the first, you know, school committee person that, you know, as we go to the hospital, someone will throw it at them. But, you know, so I am familiar with dealing with conflict. And again, and, you know, it's a bit extreme, but, you know, it was a high, high-pressure situation, delicate negotiations, and I'm used to dealing with that. So, I feel that I have, despite the fact I do not have some of the other members' experience in local politics, I do have some experience in sort of international politics, and I think I could bring that successfully to the school committee.
What do you see as our biggest challenge in the next year on the school committee?
You know, I don't know. I mean, I, like I said, I think I wanted to provide stability to the school committee. I wanted to make sure that the, I know the town of Foxborough has an excellent educational program, which my son will go into in another year when he turns five. And I wanted to make sure we continued, we kept that on track.
Excellent.
So--
So, you, at this point in time, are you out of the military?
I retired, I retired in 2008, yes. I now work for the Federal Aviation Administration as a flight test engineer.
It's commendable. I mean, thank you for serving. We all appreciate it. And some will say, we never say it lightly. Trust me, it's a very commendable thing.
Well, I'll be, I'll be quite honest with you, Mark. One of the, one of the true things that really, true prizes I got is when I got a notice from the Selectmen thanking me for my service after I came home. That was really, really, that's one of my prized possessions. I'll be, and not to get off topic, Mark, but there were two things that held me in this world, held me, the rankers in this world when I was overseas, because I was far from home, and I did not know if I was coming back. And one of them was the fact that I had a house in Foxborough. It was, it's really, this town is really important to me. You know, and it was, there were some pretty scary times.
Well, we're glad you made it back. If you, if you were to not get this position, would you apply? Because, you know, this is, sometimes we have no applicants at all. We get one for any position in town. This town, we have five. It's very unheard of that we get five on any position. Would you look towards helping in another way in the town? You get AdCom, you get--
Absolutely.
--the committee we're putting together right now, as you heard earlier?
No, absolutely. I'll be honest with you. I want, if I'm not the best candidate for this job, do not pick me, and I'm serious about that. If there's another way I can serve in this town that is better suited for my, that my qualities are better suited for, I'd be more than happy to volunteer.
It doesn't pay as well as military pays. Just so you know upfront.
With or without the stadium.
Do you think the military pays well?
I knew you'd react to that.
No, that's, that's--
That's a sarcasm.
That's, that's quite all right. But, no, seriously, you know, if there's another, if there's another role I could fill in this town, I'd be more than happy to fill it, and I don't care what that role is. So, and, you know, like I said, and the joke I made, I, you know, over the course of the last year, I made good friends with Linda Walsh, and one of the jokes, I emailed her, I said, God, I'm the least qualified person for this job. Yeah, and I'm sitting, I'm sitting there, and it's a little bit like, you know, when I, when I followed Stephanie Crimmins the last time I talked, I'm sitting there going, oh, God, what are this, what are they doing to me?
Well, I said, Lieutenant Colonel, I'm like, I couldn't put your face, is, you know what? I think I'll just get up and give my seat. I mean, I'm not qualified to even interview you. That's the way I look at it.
Well, no. You know, the way I look at it, and I've told this to Linda, is, you know, you're my elected representatives, and, you know, in the military, we're subordinate to our civilian, you know, representatives, and I really feel that way. So, you know, don't, don't ever think you're, you know, more qualified than I am in anything. But, yeah, like I said, if there's another position I can serve in in this town that's more qualified for my talents, I'm more than happy to do it, and do not hesitate to call. So--
Thank you very much. Good job, Mike. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you, Michael.
Brian Walton, please.
Good evening. I'm well, thank you.
We'd like to have you tell us what has attracted you to step up and apply for this interim job and what you see might be your contribution during this period.
Sure. I have been involved in local politics here in town. I've started off serving on school councils, the IGO School, then moved on to the Ahern School as well, served on AdCom Audit Committee. I'm certainly interested in what happens within the town and what we can do to effect change here. I'm also a consumer of the educational product that is produced here. I have four children who have come up through the schools, three of which are still actively in the public schools here. Some of the things I would like to affect change with, I realize we went through an accreditation process this past year. I would assume we have some recommendations from the Niasc group. There's some things that we could work on, certainly to improve the school systems. There's facilities and deferred maintenance that we have to take care of within the schools. My background is higher education. I've worked at Brown University now for five years. My role there is to work with students to achieve successful outcomes at the graduate level. I've worked in higher education on the undergraduate side at Brandeis University as well for a number of years. I've audited colleges and universities as well, so I'm intimately familiar with higher education. And certainly, from my perspective, there's a number of metrics that we could, metrics that we can look at within schools and evaluating the success of our educational product. And being in higher education, one of those certainly is the successful outcomes of our high school graduates and what they do next in their careers.
What do you see as a challenge for our school committee at present?
The challenge for the town in general, and I think Mark hinted at this with his question about the 70-30 split, which historically has probably averaged around 70-30 for the past 25 to 30 years, is that there-- for the past twenty-five to thirty years, is that the right mix for the town itself? We struggle with the infrastructure that we need to build on the municipal side. We've got teacher salaries on the education side. Are we at the right blend of spending for both? And I would probably argue, as would any other parent in the room, not enough for schools, certainly. At the same time, I've chaired AdCom for a year and a year-plus, and know we're bleeding on that side as well. So the struggle we have is generating revenue that we can utilize to turn around and create new programs, and really do something about the infrastructure, not only of the school buildings. We have a wonderful project going on at the high school. The Hearn renovation occurred when I had children in the school system here, and we've got issues that we have to address on the town side as well, how we get there. Colleagues of mine on AdCom have suggested a sixty-five, thirty-five split. What is the right mix? It seems historically we've done pretty well with the seventy-thirty average, and I would certainly endorse continuance of that process.
Well, one thing the school committee does try to do is return about one percent back to the town, to the CIP.
Sure.
And this year, it was, we were very fortunate. We returned a hundred and thirty-two thousand to the general fund and a hundred and fourteen thousand to the CIP.
Right.
Some of that was through rebates, which, and what we have done with the schools will save on lighting and heating and-
Right, some of the efficiencies that we put into place, both in the Hearn and what we're doing at the high school as well. Also, the use of revolving accounts will help to generate that return back to the town coffers for them to be able to use in free cash. We've, I've served on the CIP committee. I realize that what is requested and what is actually approved, the approval is a fraction of what might be needed in any particular area, schools included, the replacement and renewal that has to happen every two or three years on computers alone, printers and copiers within the system. And the relationship that has grown between the municipal and the school side in that there is more of a sharing of equipment when there is a need. I know that was started under Paul Jackson when he was here as a business manager. It's a great process to have that collaboration among the two, really, the two governing boards of the town's finances.
Brian, I'm curious, with all your experience in different parts of local government, why, for you, the right next thing or that piques your interest is school committee?
Because Jay Barrows isn't ready to step down yet.
[laughing]
And I'm not qualified to be president of Brown. We have a new president there as well. I live here, you know. This is one of those things where, you know, I've lived in the town for nineteen years. Four kids have gone through, you know, in some capacity in the system. I've got one who's going to be a senior next year in high school, and working in higher education, I understand how important it is that he's out there and beating the bushes, doing well on SATs, constantly pushing him on his GPA, and taking the AP courses that he needs to really accelerate his transcript to look more attractive for colleges and universities. For me, to look at, you know, a listing of recent graduates and where they're going to school, you know, two kids going off to Northwestern this year, which is a top-five school in the country, these things are something that we should be celebrating and be extremely proud of, and that, to me, is fundamental. You know, MCAS is great in evaluating the success of student learning and how effective we are at doing that, but it's only one measurement of success. And we need to realize that, you know, coming from higher education, to me, what is more a true indicative factor is where students are heading next.
Today, Brian, we spend so much time educating the kids on curriculum with, you know, higher standards of science, language testing. How do you feel about economics, where it comes down to? I had kids working for me that came out of different schools, didn't even know how to balance a checkbook. We went to school, we had home economics, we had simple things that got kids through, you know, basic necessities of life. Kids come out of school today, they ain't got any common sense at all. They, I mean, seriously. Do you think we need to put more effort into that? And, I mean, teach kids stocks, bonds, are we presently doing that? I mean, I'm not, I've had to educate, I don't know how many employees that didn't know how to, what interest rate was, bonding, you know, municipal bonds, checks, how to have a balanced checkbook. They knew nothing about it, and they come out of a school, not necessarily Walpole, I mean, Foxborough, Walpole, or surrounding town, but out of high school, had no clue. Do you think we need to go back more to basics a little bit?
Yes and no. One, I don't think that common sense can be taught in the schools. I really do think that's a function of parents, so I'm chuckling when you said that, but I'm also dealing with graduate students coming from fifty-three different, fifty-four different countries coming to Brown who don't know how to balance a checkbook either. So do I think, and they're tremendous and can run circles around me in math and science, and I'm a finance person, so certainly is there too much focus on sciences and not enough on other basic concepts? I don't think that there is. Do I think that there's a place for, I mean, being an accountant myself, and that area is more social sciences than it is physical or life sciences that you might be referring to, it's, to me, they're basic fundamental courses that we could offer. You know, an accounting course could count as a math course along the way. And there's statistics courses that are being offered for students now. It's, you know, AP Calc, it's a great course for those who are looking to major in math and going on, going forward, but there are more life skills that could be taught in a classroom. I'm not sure about Home Ec. I didn't necessarily take Home Ec in my high school. I grew up in Connecticut, what's considered more recipes and baking. But I took an accounting course in high school, and that's what piqued my interest going into college. It was probably more of a basic monetary management. Yes, learning how to balance a checkbook, but I will tell you, it's not a flaw of our school system that students don't know how to do that coming out. I think it's a basic principle that parents need to instill in their children, you know, an appreciation for and a respect for money and how to manage money better.
Thank you.
Are there more questions?
Thanks, Brian.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Well, we certainly have had some qualified applicants present themselves this evening. Is there a discussion, or do we have any views we'd like to express or consider?
I guess what I would offer, Bev, is I'm so impressed by all five individuals. You know, this is not an easy appointment process, I don't think, for all of us at this table. So I guess I would publicly want to say to all five that, you know, first of all, we're delighted they came forward. As Mark said, so often there aren't additional people to run for positions, and along that point, I hope they'll all run for the longer term. You know, this is an interim, shorter timeframe. The person that we decide is, you know, the best fit for the interim period doesn't mean that that's not the right person or is the right person once the town election happens. So I guess I would just encourage all five that-
To step forward again.
I would say, thank you, and I would say, think about it, you know, come May as well.
Absolutely.
Is this, is this something we're going to take a hand vote on? Is this going to be a quiet vote?
Just raise your hand.
You just raise your hand. It's in public.
There could be multiple motions.
Yep. And when you get nine people making different motions.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, yes, Kevin.
If I may make a suggestion.
Certainly.
You can really proceed two ways. I've seen this before. One is someone makes a motion for candidate, any vote, and if there's sufficient number of votes, you're done. The other way is each of you expresses a preference for your number-one candidate. I've got a score sheet here, just sort of, and I'll just put X's and then say, okay, this candidate got four votes, this one got three votes, this one got two. That's not a vote, that's just an indication of preference. That would then have to be followed by a vote, or maybe some of it will emerge, but really, you're-
I think the last time we did this, we nominated, I think, two people, and they voted. Because I've done this before.
You could pick your one and two candidates, see how the votes felt, and then make a motion for them. What would be your preference?
Well, I would suggest that we look at somebody who is very aware of what has been going on and been following the school committee and our needs and our struggles and our decisions, and aware of what is also happening on the town side. They're all qualified and certainly would bring different perspectives, and each had their own different gift to them.
So are you suggesting, perhaps, that each person make a recommendation about who they want to bring forward, and then you can tally them, and then from there, maybe bring the both, the two highest votes, and then, speaking to what you were suggesting, Martha?
Or, or-
Or just go with the majority? I'm just-
Well, it's going to come down to the majority anyways.
Right.
It could be tied.
Right.
That's my point.
That would be the best.
So I just don't, I would think, I mean, you've got to put this a little bit of perspective. Whoever you put in this position is getting a kickoff or a pretty good, you know, trial effort of running for it next spring. I mean, you're really putting somebody in a position against another candidate right off the bat that can, has a jump start. That's the one way I look at it. So I just think, I think the board should do a silent poll. Everybody write down, and you're like, give them all to Kevin and see how it comes out. And then we'll know how the board, the school boards feel, and then we can either go with that.
Mark, if you're going to do it in an open session, you do it in an open session. You don't take a ballot.
What I'm saying, because what it does is, it prevents a tie, is the only reason I'm saying it. Because sometimes people say, okay, okay, you know.
There are nine people here, there will be no tie.
Where somebody goes to somebody else. It could be a four-four-one, it could be a three-three-two, it could be-
I would recommend that each person speak who they are, want to bring forward, who they're interested in, and at that time, you'll count how many votes that those particular people have instead of doing a-
Nominate.
I propose that we don't. I propose that each person speak who they want to bring forward, and then from there, the person with the most number of votes will have the majority.
I think that's a good suggestion.
I think that this way we avert one particular person being brought forward and then other people not, perhaps, receiving support from other people, and I think that, given the number of people that are presenting and taking the time, I think it would be only fair for them to hear, you know, that they may have support, but maybe it wouldn't be in the majority, but they still had support in terms of their candidacy for this appointment.
Okay. We'll start on the left, I guess.
If that's the majority, what, that's what I'm proposing, you know.
Beth, could I just ask a question?
Yes.
Coming in here, I was thinking, you know, where certainly the school committee recognizes fully what your needs are, I would ask you to consider you making the recommendations and that we-
Support us.
Support your recommendations.
That's the last one.
Yeah. So, you know, rather than us stepping forward, I would feel more comfortable doing that.
I thought the-
Now, that's-
But that excludes the board's vote.
No, 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 we would still vote. They could make-
We vote to support their decision. It takes away five individual votes. I don't think that's how it's done.
We would vote on that, once it gets to the nomination stage, we would vote on it. You know, I just don't think it's fair, like Lorraine's saying, for us to say, well, you know, I nominate somebody, or I, you know, I'm behind so-and-so, like Kate said, you know, I think it should come from the school committee. These are the folks that know exactly what they need, and then we, you know, make up our mind who to support, right?
I-
Kevin.
Just so that it's clear, the law requires nine individual votes.
Exactly.
Whether the vote comes in a formal, four people vote and make a recommendation, and then nine of you vote, and find that what you can't have, is four people make a recommendation as one vote.
Sure.
And then five corroborate the one. You can't do that.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at.
But four people could discuss and vote and make a recommendation, and then someone would have to make a motion.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yes.
I think it sounds like Linda's just speaking to the spirit of, you know, under-
It's directing, it's a directing vote. I mean, you're making a vote and you're kind of steering us in a direction where it's supposed to be nine individual votes. If we're going to make a motion and vote, let's make motions and vote. Let's not play, you make a motion and vote, and then we agree or disagree. I don't find that ethical.
I think what Katie is asking, Katie might bring up-
Trying to be clarified, I'm just clarifying.
Well, Katie might bring up Michael and say, you know, I want Michael, and Beth might say, well, I would like to speak a little bit about Marsha, and, and, you know, that's how, that's what I'm talking about. That's what they said they were going to do.
I'm not suggesting that we make a motion. I'm saying that we each cast our vote.
Okay, I misunderstood what you're saying.
Of who they support.
Of who we support, and then from there, proceed.
Okay. Your ball.
Who wants to go first?
So, I'm in support of Marsha. I've actually known her for quite some time. I know she's always had an interest in the school committee, has always participated in some form, even way back when, has always been abreast of what's going on. I think she brings a lot, being a retired school teacher and her administrative input. She's aware of MCAS and our responsibilities and how we have to meet these standards, and I think, I think she can bring a lot to the table. I know her to be fair and open-minded and to be a good listener, and I think that's one of the qualities in that, because I was a citizen of some kind.
I was impressed with all five candidates. I think they, any one of them would serve well. As I tried to think through how to determine down from the five, I think two of them have immediate, relevant experience, that could have immediate short-term impact based on their very recent activity with the schools. So to me, that gives them a little advantage in terms of being able to bring immediate credibility. And then between those two, one of them has had tremendous public support that I've seen, and knowing that we represent the public, that's what, in part, cast the deciding vote for me, so I would recommend Tina Bellinger.
I just want to thank all of the candidates who came forward, because they've taken their time this evening to come and talk to us and share their obvious love of Foxborough, both the town and the school system. So I really do want to thank all of you. You all have very unique and qualities that I think would be strengths to the committee in different ways. Having served on the AdCom, I think that that is really not necessarily a necessary prerequisite, but I think it's certainly a very valuable one as we are sitting here tonight and working with the selectmen. It's something that we do on a annual basis as we discuss budgets and address very challenging issues that face Foxborough, and so I support Tina for that, this position.
I also would like to thank five qualified candidates who stepped forward, and I want to remind them that within another about ten months, there will be two positions open on the school committee running, two positions open on the selectman running, and there will be openings in advisory committee. So if you would like to serve the town, it is very possible for you to step forward to, and you certainly have the credentials to do so. My reading on this is I would like to see somebody step into this interim position who is fully aware of what the needs are of the, of the school system, of where students are having to go. I think in this particular situation, it puts two people at advantage because they have served on the advisory committee. Because Brian Walton has already stepped forward before to run for school committee, and he has had the longer experience on the advisory committee, and because he also is aware of where we are prepping our young people to go, that I would support Brian. I mean, we have qualified candidates. So it's not an easy decision.
Well, I mean, I see it going two ways. We can go back and you guys can kind of talk yourselves into changing your mind to get a unanimous vote, or at this point, I would make, I would be willing to make a recommendation based on the majority of the school committee, having two people pick Tina, make a recommendation to nominate Tina to move forward in that position. I'll throw that out there.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chairman?
You know, I don't want to step on, it's not a motion that I want to jump in. It's a recommendation. Sorry.
I thought it was a motion. Well, they are doing-
Well, they are doing it, but what I'm saying is, they came up, two people, the majority came up against, for Tina. One person picked somebody else, one person picked somebody else. We've got nine people left to vote on this.
They know that, though, and I think that they should make that judgment. I just, you know, I'd rather see the board.
How does this board feel?
Well, I understand that. But I also walked into this meeting, having talked to Beth, saying each person was gonna get one vote, because that's what's different about this. And not the planning board and not any other, because the statute on this is a little different than on the other boards. So, it is a little different. That's, I was just trying to make it easy.
I think, Jimmy, you're doing, we're doing it right now. It's been discussion on this, but now it should be Linda and all the way down the board, and then the top two vote-getters we make a motion for, and then we all vote on who we want out of those top two. I think that's what was first discussed. It's what I kind of agreed to, so I'd like to see what the rest of the board has to say. And then we make a motion on the top two, just like we do with town council.
You okay with that, Beth?
I'm all right with that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
You're in order.
That's not necessarily true. You go ahead.
All right, I'll go with Brian. Make it simple.
I spoke. I'm recommending Tina.
Tina, three. Okay.
I'm recommending Brian.
So that's what you're doing.
Well, that's it. What'd you say? I'm sorry. All right, so there you go.
I'm recommending Tina.
Okay. See now, I will make a motion. Is it okay?
I think the motion should come from that.
Okay. Try not stepping your toes.
What were the tallies you just took?
But what about Linda? Linda, did you rec-
I thought you did. I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm gonna say Marsha.
Okay, there's two for Marsha. All right?
So two for Marsha.
Four for Tina.
Two for fifteen and three for Brian. Those following along.
So it's still that.
So do you need a motion now? Is that how we're gonna proceed? A motion, so I'll make a motion?
It should come from you guys.
I'll make a motion then to appoint Tina as school committee member interim.
And I would like to make a motion to appoint Brian. Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, second, second.
You need a motion and a second.
Yeah.
And discussion.
Then, I don't think, like the way these boards typically function, you can have a second motion.
To be a joint-
Not at the same time. You need to just have one.
The first one will reflect what-
The motion should, we just discussed, the top two candidates from the pool of the both of boards. It should include both people, Brian and Tina, and then it should be seconded, and then the discussion and the vote. That's the way I thought we were gonna do this.
Well, there is a motion. I don't know-
Well, no, there was no second on that.
That's your, that's your list.
Right.
And if there's a second on the table.
No.
There was not a second on the table.
Yeah, I was about to second it when we get, before we get into discussion. I will second Katie's motion for Tina with just the comment again of thanks and recognition that this is a short-term assignment. We hope everyone will participate in the May election.
Now, you have to vote that up or down.
Right. And then if it doesn't pass, then we go on to the second motion, and someone else makes a second, makes another motion.
All right.
So the motion was made, it was seconded, and now it's for discussion. All right, Beth?
All those in favor for Tina?
Well, there was discussion.
There's a further discussion.
It's a difficult position we're in. They're all wonderful.
Yeah.
We want them all to come back in May. I don't mean to downplay it, because it's an important decision, but it's a nine or 10-month decision. And so, I, we can't do right, but we also can't do wrong. They're all fantastic.
Right, right. Well said. Well said.
So call you a question? Question is called. All for Tina?
Seven, one, zero.
How'd you get seven, one, zero?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You were one.
Do you want it again?
No.
All right, so eight. I didn't-
Did you vote?
Eight, she did not vote.
No, I-
Why not just raise your hands again?
All right, yeah. There you go.
So eight in favor, and then you have to say those not in favor.
You were opposed, correct?
No, I'm not opposed, because she's an excellent candidate. I abstained. She's insane.
So, seven.
Eight, zero, one.
Eight, zero, one.
But you get a report.
Yeah, you have to.
It's not a roll call vote. It's, make it easier.
It's not a roll call vote. No, 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 it's not a roll call vote.
But you have to say that you abstained.
For the minutes.
I did, I did say I abstained. Oh.
But that has cleared course.
Congratulations, Tina. You'll do a great job.
Now, we're going to-
All right. Now, I need to, if this is over, I need to take a roll call vote for us to go into executive session.
What do we have? Take five minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, take five minutes?
We may have some five, some of us sitting.
Okay.
But we have not gone into executive session, so we need to stay open a little bit longer. So if you guys wanna go into a-
No, we, no, we-
You can't go into executive session.
We have to go, we've been invited into their executive session.
Yeah, so we'll take the vote.
For the health insurance.
Executive session and not, and come back out.
Well, because it's been called as an executive session.
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining for them.
Nothing to do with this, but it's the contracts, it's the insurance and-
Strategy with the strategy.
So when we reconvene, we're taking, we're taking a five-minute recess, and when we reconvene, we must take a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Correct. Yep.
Got you.
Could you just flip five minutes?
Yeah. Five minutes.
Thank you. Welcome back from a brief. Can we just have a little quiet so we can start up again? Before the break, we had talked about going into executive session. I'm gonna ask if it's all right with the school committee just to take a backseat for a minute. We've got one gentleman here that's since the beginning.
Bostrom.
Yeah, so if you could just sit. And we're gonna do one item under action items. Gentleman's been here since the beginning. And then when we finish that, we'll hold off the other action items and do executive session. So, action item number two is a request for a temporary permission to allow a restaurant customer to bring their own alcohol beverages, commonly known as BYOB, into Asian Ginger to drink with their meals. Mark, I just met you. Do you wanna come up to the table?
All right.
So this, so-
Hello, everybody.
Welcome. And for the record, if you could just introduce yourself?
My name is Gary from Asian Ginger, just across the street at the restaurant.
So Mark from Asian Ginger was in the Friendly's Restaurant?
Yeah, yeah. So we just request for like, because right now, we didn't gather that from liquor license yet. So a lot of customers asking is, can I just bring like, um, like, beer or wine, yeah, to the restaurant, so.
And there was some information in the packet for that as well. I think there was a letter. So, we can open it up to the board discussion. It's, yeah, there is, there's a letter talking about the state law and their interpretation of it.
Thanks, Jim. Where I had, I had worked with Chief O'Leary on the liquor license regulations, and we don't have any policies related to bring BYOB for restaurants. Chief O'Leary volunteered to talk to the chief of police in Mansfield, where they do have some restaurants with BYOB permitted. And he was going to find out what types of policies they have, because since we don't have any experience with this around this type of situation, we thought it would make sense to try and take a look at how other towns manage it, and then see if it's something that we could consider discussing, we could discuss with the board and see if the board would like to do that based on the types of policies. So Chief O'Leary said that he would get that information to us so that we could have it for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If that's all right.
Okay, no problem.
Is that all right with everybody?
Our next meeting is two weeks from now, on July 24th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Well, I just had a question. Why haven't you applied for the liquor license? You said you're not ready for it.
Actually, I should still need, because over here, I need, prior for liquor license, need assistance. I still need like a four more months to, because right now, I gotta just get a green card, you know? So need a four more months. So, because right now, I wanna get the BYOB, it really help us in the business, because, you know, everybody go there for the dinner, they just wanna some sushi or some like, sake or some like, you know, like this one, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Kevin?
Chairman of the board, we ran this question by, special, thanks, Mark. We ran this question by special liquor council Lou Cassis, who's represented the board in the past on liquor issues. Unfortunately, and I am truly sorry for this, but unfortunately, Mark indicated, Lou indicated that there is no law that allows this, BYOB, in essence. Moreover, towns can't, you cannot give approval, because you can't approve something that's not allowed at statute. In addition, we have a license available. And so to not require it to be paid for and to be cognizant of the fact that liquor is on the premises of a license that you issue, in this case, the common vic license, you are accepting liability, which is extremely ill-advised. Because if there is an issue on those premises related to liquor, we are most assuredly going to be brought into the litigation because of the board's action to either give approval or to countenance the fact. You are now knowledgeable of the fact that this is taking place. And Lou's advice basically is, you must tell the gentleman, "It is forbidden. He cannot do it." Otherwise, you accept liability.
So I think, Mark, I think what you're hearing is, as Ginny indicated, there is one liquor license that's available. If you can, if you can work towards that, that's an option. To bring your own, while it's not a dry town and we have liquor licenses that are active, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen, even for the next meeting for discussion.
Jimmy, for clarification, the reason why you do not apply for the beer and wine license that's existing in the town right now for $250 fee is that you don't have your citizenship. Is that what I heard from you?
Yes.
So you're here operating on a green card?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Kevin, is it possible that the entity can hire somebody to become the manager on premise and then apply with that person for a liquor license?
A relative could apply, a co-owner with a corporation if there is one. Another principal in the corporation could apply and be the holder of the license.
Or a hired bar manager?
A relative with an equity interest could be the owner. It's gotta be a member of the corporation. It's gotta be someone with an equity interest in the business.
And a principal. Has to be a principal.
Manager can't hold the license.
Okay, so it has to be somebody that's a principal. Is there somebody that you have that could do that?
So, okay, I understand that. So better ways, like, I should be finding another, if I wanna like, don't, if I don't wanna wait for four more months, so I know now I better we just find another partners.
Yes. You need to find someone who is legally able to hold the license to apply.
Okay.
That's, you trust and it's connected with your business. And then that person can be the holder of the license, provided the board finds their suitable-
Okay.
-to hold the license. And you can accomplish that anytime you can identify that person.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And you, Jim, you can call the office. We'll help you.
Yeah, 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 I will. All right. Thank you.
And we wish you luck. We know you've done a ton of work on the restaurant, and we wish you luck. And thank you for bringing the business to Foxborough.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good luck.
I'll just finish the action, so we might come back in a good session. Can you do the action with one motion? Do the whole thing. Cause I don't think there's anything on it that's controversial.
Donation, exception, donation.
You don't have to do the minutes this week. You could do that.
Well, there is three appointments. I don't wanna do everything in just one, so this-
We can blast through these in five minutes, not even.
Okay, we'll do that quick. All right. Board of Select meeting minutes. Actually, you know what? Let's, I don't want inconvenience the school committee. They've come, so let's-
It's only a couple minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll go back into open session afterwards, so we'll deal with it. So, you guys wanna come back? Thank you.
Tina, whenever we go into an executive session, I have to have a motion and a second, and then we take it by roll call vote, okay? And that's how we get out of executive session, too. So I need an, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session for discussion with health insurance discussion group for the purpose of employee health insurance initiative, non-union negotiation.
All right, and we will not return to open session. Do I need, I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tina? Aye?
Aye.
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 And, just for record, you missed one person?
Yeah.
Yes, she-
So, there's four. Martha Slattery is not present.
So.
I move that the board of selectmen go into executive session for the purpose of employee health insurance initiative and non-union negotiation.
And then return to open session.
That's not written correctly, and I apologize. It should say, "Strategy with respect to collective bargaining."
Strategy.
And for discussion regarding negotiations with non-union personnel. Those who are union. And I apologize, that's not written.
Still move.
And we will go back into open session afterwards.
Yeah, it's still in open session.
Okay.
All right. Kevin, could you do, "Strategy for collective bargaining and?"
Tell me just, you know-
Once more?
Actually, the part about non-union is not something you need to stay for. That's just the board, so you don't need to go in for that.
Okay, so, so we-
Can you repeat, please, what we're going, what you just said?
Strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
Okay. Thank you.
And Frank, you had a question on the cable?
Will we come back? We open session will be in late.
I would say, take the night off after that. Just so the people at home know what the action items are, there's some donations that we're gonna accept. There's an appointment of Paul Dumas, Marie Crimmens, and Jennifer Savikas to different boards. And there's an invitation for the selectmen to attend a River Community Church organization. So that's what we're gonna talk about. So I don't think you have to come back with the cable afterwards. Thank you.